I'll call you when you can go on.
Hi, Bill.
Hi, Annette. How are you doing?
I'm good. How about you?
Pretty good. Pretty good.
Yeah, I just I don't have my computer, so I'm on my iPad.
Oh, my goodness. Hey, Becky. Hey, David. Let's see. Planning board. One. Hey, Chris.
Hi, Bill.
How are you?
Good. How are you?
Hey, Chris, remember to put your roof up before Friday. On your car.
Oh, what's up?
Can't hear you. You're muted.
I'm done.
Wait a minute.
No.
I'm muted.
Yeah, I think your your volume was off, David, I think.
No, it's up. That cat goes inside. It's crazy weather.
Sorry about that. What'd you say?
Crazy weather.
Yeah, so remember, put your put your roof up.
What's happening Friday?
Six to twelve benches now. Some say eight, nine to twelve, some say six to twelve, but.
Oh, good heavens.
Lots of lots of twelves coming up.
Yeah, my father, my father has all of his news and weather apps are all for up here. Because because of our business, he's obsessed with weather and trucks and everything. And he's like, oh, this Friday is gonna be a good day. I'm like, yeah.
Yeah. Thursday into Friday.
I asked if you wanted any company.
Yeah, heading back down.
I'm going, yeah.
Hi, Bob. Hey, Bill. Natalie, okay.
Three.
Hi. And. Any more of mine there?
Select.
Bill, can you confirm if you can hear me?
I can hear you.
Okay, good. I had to switch computers. Thanks.
Select Board has a forum, so we're good.
Okay, I need, I think I need one more. Let's see. But I see Bob, Natalie's two. Bill's three. And that's four. And. Jim, five, I have a we have a quorum. Is Chris here? Well, we have a we have a quorum.
Yep, so do we, so we can start whenever it's time, and I'll turn it over to Chris to. To do the open and everything else.
I don't know if Chris is on yet, is he?
Bill, I'm going. I'm going back. I'm going to your old town when I go down in April. Wellington.
Oh, you are.
Yeah, next door neighbor from the house in Maine.
Yeah.
His daughter has a stable down there, and she does some dressage and other equestrian type things, so we're gonna get out and visit.
Oh, we have less to talk before you go.
Yeah. Tell me where not to go.
Let's see. Okay. I can't see. Is Chris Arsenal joined yet?
Let's see his name.
I'll see. Oh, that's Jeff. Let's see.
Yes, Chris Arsenal just came on now.
Okay. Hey, Chris, we have a full. I'm sorry, Mr. Chair.
No, no, it's Chris, you can take the lead. I know you guys have a a full agenda from what I saw after after this, so. Let's hopefully we can make this portion of the meeting very, very timely, half hour, you know, maybe so you guys can get started at seven.
Thanks, David. I think that's, yeah, that also is good to me. Thank you.
Chris, we have a forum of the planning board.
Okay.
And we do have, we have a quorum of the select board as well. Let me just verify that the members of the board can hear me. So before you read the script, Chris, Krista Silva.
Yes.
Justine St. John.
Yes.
Jeff Swanberg. Jeff. You're muted, but that's okay. I saw you say yes. And Armand Dear Bakirian?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thanks, Chris. Take it away.
Thanks, David. I'll open up this meeting of the planning board. It is February twenty second, two thousand twenty two. The time is six thirty one. And I'll do roll call for members. Please confirm that you can hear me as well. Bob Brown.
I'm here and I can hear you fine.
Thanks, Bob. Jim Coleman.
Yes, I hear you fine.
Bill Kinshaw.
Yes, all set.
Thanks, Bill. Natalie, are you on, Natalie?
Yep, hello.
Great. Thanks, Natalie. And Annette, is Annette on tonight?
Yes, yeah.
Thanks, Annette.
You're fine. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Since this is a remote meeting. Just give me one sec. So tonight's meeting is fully remote, full virtual. We have the options for accessing this meeting tonight are the Zoom is a Zoom call, but also the dial-in calling number. Bill, for tonight's meeting. The first agenda item is.
We have a.
Joint meeting, the joint, the presentation by Ralph Wilmer. Is that correct? Is Ralph, are you here tonight?
I am here.
Thanks, Ralph.
Good evening.
Um, Bill, would you like to give an introduction to this at all, or should we just turn it over to Ralph?
I don't want to waste too much time, but essentially this was a grant made possible by from NAPC. And the Office of Economic Affairs has been in a process about two years. It's a long term planning vision. This is the first phase of it, and what Ralph is gonna do is present sort of the synopsis of what was uncovered. And we will tell you where to find all the materials after that we've posted online as well. So I just introduced Ralph, and we can get going if you're okay with that, Mr. Chair.
Please, Bill, go ahead.
Okay, so Ralph Ralph Wilmer is the principal planner for Metropolitan Area Planning Council, longtime planner. And I will. Oh, there is. Okay, Ralph, I'm gonna turn it over to you, and thanks for coming.
Okay, thank you. And you're gonna share the screen with the presentation, Bill?
Bill's muted, but I'm pretty sure that he said yes. I'm getting good at lip reading from the Zoom calls.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So while he's doing that. This is a project that was funded in part by MAPC through our Technical Assistance Grant Program. And then we worked with the town to obtain additional funds through the planning grant program that. Is run by the Executive Office of Environmental of Energy and Environmental Affairs. So as Bill mentioned, we did start this project a couple of years ago. And it was designed to. Involve the town of Acton as well. And. It was was a good collaborative effort between the two towns as we work through the project. So next slide, please. This next slide just introduces the the project team members. I won't go through it in great detail, but as I mentioned, it involved. Members from the town of Maynard, the town of Acton, as well as MAPC, and I was the project manager for it. Next slide. So this is a quick. Map of the of the study area. It essentially runs from the Stop and Shop Plaza in Acton. Along Powder Mill Road to about the edge of the downtown area. Of the town of Maynard. And I'll go over some of the highlights of the study area map as we go through the next. Use slides. So next slide. So why are we studying Powder Mill Road? There were a lot of. Opportunities that. You know, that are addressed by looking at this entire corridor. It's about a mile and a half long. But there are also, you know, a number of different issues that we wanted to look at as we got into this project. So. The highlights are that. Powder Mill Road serves as a gateway to downtown Maynard and its Assabet Village Cultural District. Its location includes Acton's Technology District, Powder Mill Plaza, numerous large businesses, as well as some small businesses. It encompasses a number of residential neighborhoods as well. The future Beijing Royal School site is located along the corridor. The proximity to the Assabet River provided a number of opportunities that I'll discuss in more detail as well. And it also showed a lot of challenges as well as opportunities regarding multimodal transportation. Along the border. Next slide. So regarding access. There along the Powder Mill Corridor Study Area, there was somewhat limited access to the Assabet River. There is a canoe launch. In Acton, but it was not incredibly visible. In fact, that sign that's in the photo runs parallel to the road, so people. Aren't really aware of it, but it's a site that was recently improved to some extent to include some parking and picnic benches. There are also a couple of other sites. There's an impoundment, and there's also a the Powder Mill Dam, and all of these issues were discussed. As we thought about access to the river. Next slide. So the dam is showed there as well as. A photo elsewhere. This is on the Maynard side of the study area, the right hand side photo. But we saw that there were a lot of opportunities. Where the river abuts some of the lots on the northern end of the study area. Where better access could be provided. When you look at some of these sites. The viewpoints. Through the river and so on and so forth. Are pretty pronounced. There's a number of trails on the other side of the river. And we tried to think about ways in which access to the river could be enhanced. And that'll be discussed in more detail toward the end of the presentation. Excellent. We also noted a number of different issues and challenges regarding the streetscape and how transportation opportunities. Were. Identified along along the corridor, but also some of the challenges. And this slide highlights some of the challenges. That were faced. We found numerous obstacles along the sidewalks, such as some of these telephone poles. On the left hand side photo. There's poor pavement condition in a number of places. There's a lack of curbing that creates a safe separation between the roadway and pedestrian walkways. Similarly, in the next photo, you see that the crosswalks are faded, so. There just wasn't. That many places where people could feel. Safe as they cross the streets that ran into Powder Mill Road. The next photo is one of my favorites, actually. It's what I call an ADA curb ramp to nowhere. You see the curb ramp, but then it's interrupted by the curbing of a parking lot, so it serves no useful purpose. So we found a number of other obstacles to safe pedestrian traffic. And then there are portions of the roadway that have no sidewalks or curb cuts or curbing. So there's no separation for cyclists. And so on and so forth. So we made a number of different recommendations regarding. Pedestrian and cycling safety. There are also some areas where the right of way is. Interrupted by by private property on. Next slide. At the same time, we found a number of different opportunities for doing some planning into the future of for land use along the. Roadway corridor. Their residential opportunities, their sites for ongoing or future residential development and mixed use development. At meet community goals that have already been identified in Maynard's Housing Production Plan and Master Plans. We looked at those plans. Or ways to further implement some of the recommendations. In terms of commercial opportunities, there are sites that offer commercial amenities or services to residents and visitors. And by rethinking some of the priorities in zoning, those opportunities can be further enhanced. A river access, as we've talked about, there are a number of sites that could offer key access or viewpoints to the Assabet River. And then in terms of pedestrian and cycling infrastructure, there are sites that could help guide streetscape improvements. So that we can enhance the access and safety for both pedestrians and. Next slide, please. So there are a number of different opportunity sites that are. For they include Powder Mill Plaza, the Acton Canoe Launch that I mentioned earlier. The Apartments at Powder Mill Place. It's a number of new residents that are coming into the area that could. Take advantage of any businesses that get located within the corridor. The Beijing Royal School, which is obviously a project that is still moving forward. The pandemic has. Interrupted their plans for in terms of the timing, but they're still moving forward with the school and. This will bring a number of new residents and employees to the area. And then there are there are few other commercial sites as well.
Hey, Ralph, Ralph, I'm sorry. This is Greg Johnson, the town administrator. I'm sorry to interrupt you. I'm also on a not a great computer, so I apologize. I'm probably coming.
So did were you going to?
Greg, we can't hear you, Greg.
Yeah, we lost Greg for a minute. We can't hear us. We can't hear you. Maybe Greg, could you, if you have an opportunity to put in the chat, that's another option, Greg. Now read it out loud for you. Ralph, why don't you continue on and.
Okay.
So a quick summary of the land use and zoning recommendations.
Sorry, guys. I think what Greg is trying to say is that we are at capacity in this meeting. Unfortunately, our Zoom only allows for a hundred people. We're. In the process of upgrading, but I don't have that permission today. And. So this is it's a violation of open meeting law to have a meeting that has people that aren't able to participate. So I think we might have to reschedule. I am so sorry for this inconvenience. I Bill, we might have to. I don't know what to do about.
Well, I, yeah, probably the best thing to do right now. It's being.
Well, yeah, probably the best thing to do right now. It's being live streamed on Facebook, correct? So if we could ask everybody that had can to go on Facebook, they will free up some spots in the Zoom. And this is taped and we'll be able to watch it. But I'm sorry for the inconvenience, but if you could go on Facebook and watch it, it would help us with the capacity issue. And I see people are cooperating already. Thank you so much. We're down to eighty-nine. And I promise you, we will get you the tape as well, but you you don't have to miss a thing.
Megan, would you mind putting the link to the Facebook Live in the chat? If you have it available? Thank you.
Good, good problem solving, Bill. And I'm so sorry to interrupt. This is the first time it's happened. And we are upgrading to three hundred. So I did not expect this to be so popular, but we're thrilled it's popular. And thank you to everyone who's helping out. I'm going to put this in the link in right now.
It's a it's a good sign in a way.
Yeah, I I have been involved in so many of these Zoom meetings over the last couple of years. And this is the first time I've seen this happen.
Is there something else on your agenda that's attracting all the people? Or is it purely Powder Mill Road?
It's planning, all planning stuff.
Oh, I know that.
All right, all right, I'm gonna I'm gonna take back control of this, guys. Greg or Megan, can you confirm that we have remediated the challenge? Okay, so we remediated the challenge. We're not in violation of open meeting laws. We stand now. Let's maybe maybe Ralph, pick it back up, maybe from your last start of like your last talking point perhaps.
Okay.
Is that okay?
You want to go back a slide or two, Bill?
Yeah, just just a quick recap so that we can all catch the thread again.
Okay.
Thanks.
Okay, I'll start restart here. So we saw a number of different opportunities along the Powder Mill Road Study Area. And those include residential opportunities that there are a number of sites where ongoing residential and mixed-use development is occurring as well as some potential future sites. And these sites meet the community goals and recommendations from both the Housing Production Plan and the Master Plan. So we use those plans as as one of our guides as we made recommendations for the Powder Mill Corridor, which I'll get into in a couple of slides. There's also a number of commercial opportunities, and I'll talk about that again in the next slide. But the there are a number of commercial sites that offer a number of amenities and services to residents and visitors. And as more residential is developed throughout the area, you know, that will enhance the commercial opportunities as well. They go hand in hand. In terms of river access, as I was mentioning earlier in the meeting, we have a number of sites that could offer key access to the Assabet River as well as viewpoints to the river. So we wanted to identify that. And then we made recommendations to help guide streetscape improvements that would enhance safety and access for both pedestrians and cyclists. So a number of opportunity sites were studied and looked at in more detail as reported in the plan itself. They include the Powder Mill Plaza, the Acton New Launch that I mentioned earlier, the Apartments at Powder Mill Place, a whole bunch of new apartments to be built there to more residents populating the area that can service the commercial establishments along the corridor. The Beijing Royal School, which obviously has been somewhat delayed by the pandemic, is moving forward. So there'll be a number of new residents and employees occupying that space. And therefore, will be available for to to help out the commercial businesses along the corridor. And you know, there are several other commercial developments as well. And some of the zoning recommendations are designed to provide more opportunities redevelopment of those sites as the property owners be fit.
I'm seeing a notice from somebody on the chat here that apparently the Facebook portion of this has lost audio, has lost audio. So they can only see, they can't hear. Is I don't know if that's true for everybody on Facebook or if it's just this individual. But just to
David, are you referring to the chat?
It was a chat, a chat came, a chat came through that just said, we're on Zoom and lost audio.
If if that's referring to Zoom, it seems that's referring to Zoom, not Facebook, but if
Oh, good point.
We could.
Oh, good point. Then then I'm I'm hearing everything.
So this is this is how we'll proceed. Megan or Greg, can you just check to make sure that the Facebook audio is working? And if it's not, pause us, but please, please continue, Ralph.
Okay. So just to summarize some of the land use and zoning recommendations that are in the plan, we're looking to we recommend creation of an overlay zoning district that would cover the entire study area. An overlay district is a special zoning district that's placed over the existing zoning, but it provides new opportunities for development. We including included in that overlay district is an expanded list of allowable uses to encourage a greater mix of retail and restaurants, hotels and inns, entertainment, office, education, medical facilities, so on and so forth, create more opportunities for new businesses to serve the residents, but also to provide create a place so that people come to Powder Mill Road for a variety of reasons, not just to go to the stores, but also to live, work and play essentially. In terms of housing, we wanted to encourage a mix of housing types, including mixed-use and multifamily. As I mentioned, this is with the recommendations in the Housing Production Plan. We also looked at parking to create more flexible and shared parking with a desire to try and place the parking alongside or the rear of buildings so that it's not in front of the buildings and to incorporate landscaping regulations that would help to reduce stormwater runoff. Additionally, we make recommendations to adjust some of the dimensional regulations to encourage redevelopment. That would include reducing some of the minimum lot sizes. We've found that a number of lot sizes within the study area are already smaller than the existing minimum lot sizes per the zoning. So this would just bring a little bit more conformance into those those lot sizes, decreasing the front yards setback and and to increase building height with a special permit so that there's again more flexibility for development, particularly for mixed use that typically has commercial on the first floor and residential above it. We also looked at some design guidelines to encourage neighborhood scale. And then we added landscaping and buffering and screening to ensure compatibility between the budding youths. And this is a slide that just shows some examples of mixed-use development from other communities within the M A P C region. In terms of river, Assabet River access recommendations within zoning, we looked at establishing setbacks from the river and creating minimal usable open space requirements to ensure a healthy and accessible riverfront. So this is provide open space opportunities, but also to ensure perfection of the riverfront. We look to encourage the use of green infrastructure. So and I'll show some examples of that to control stormwater without necessarily getting into hard engineering requirements, but using the natural landscape as a way to provide stormwater protection. And consider considering incentives to provide river access. So if a developer wanted to look to for instance, establish a resident, a restaurant in the area, they could provide access to the river through their property. As a way to get that access to the river from private property. We also encourage creating viewpoints and or a riverwalk from private properties, encouraging protection of the riverfront. The next done in conjunction also with Conservation Commission rules and regulations regarding riverfront action. And also to look for more public-private partnerships with organizations such as the Organization for the Assabet River. So this shows just another couple of opportunities. The picture on the left is, you know, I I talked earlier about the wide-open viewpoints of the river within the Corridor Study Area. And this is at the edge of one of the commercial developments in Maynard. That just shows, you know, how much opportunity there might be to try and provide access. Right now, it's a fairly steep slope with with a fence. And the photo on the right is from the senior housing project in Maynard. And there's a fence there as well. And that fence could be opened up to provide more direct access to the river. Next slide. In terms of streetscape, the plan shows two different options. The first option would be more of a low-cost and shorter-term option to restripe the corridor to provide complete street features. The town has already undergone the process for doing some design work for complete streets. But you can see that this restriping could provide or safer pedestrian ways as well as bike way, you know, bike path option as well. And the next slide shows a reconstruction option that would obviously entail more design, greater funding and construction work, but includes incorporation of green infrastructure, street trees, sidewalk amenities such as benches and planters, driveway design guidelines, lighting and safety features that would incorporate the design requirements of the American Americans with Disability Act, and it would eliminate encroachment into the right-of-way. So some of the green infrastructure design features that we talk about, the left-hand photo is for permeable pavement so that the pavement actually allows the water to seep through as opposed to draining off into other areas. The middle photo shows a drainage swell. It's all made with native plantings as a way to so the stormwater can be funneled directly into that feature as opposed to typical sewer situation. And the photo on the right shows an increased tree canopy to provide more shading and to reduce the heat island effect that lots tend to have that would raise the temperature in that area. And I think that is the final slide, so I will turn it back to the boards to see how they want to proceed.
Thanks, Ralph. Great presentation, and I really appreciate your time and all this and all the effort that you've put into it. I'd also like to thank all the members of our community. And I know it's a small thing that was done, but I'd just like to thank everyone that jumped from Zoom to the Facebook Live that allowed us to continue. It's a small thing, but it does show that this community is really good at working together to help each other out. So I appreciate that. I saw some some good feedback in the chat. And so, Bill, I would like to be able to preserve that feedback that was given from our members of the community. Also to the members of the community, if 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 this if this if 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 after watching this presentation, if you feel like there's something you'd like to share about this, I think a good thing you could do is write an email to either Bill Numzer or Megan Zamudo and just title it feedback on the Powder Mill Corridor Initiative so that they can collect your feedback on this initial presentation. Community feedback is going to continue to be immensely helpful for us as we plan plan out this initiative. The time is seven.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair, or if our acting, our acting friends. They can send to Kristen, is Kristen on here? And Kristen Gushard in Acton, she's can take it as well.
Thanks, Bill, for the reminder. I I apologize to our acting friends that have joined tonight. I was, I overlooked that part of it. So yes, thank you, Bill, for that reminder. Bill, I'm willing, I'm willing to to give another five minutes to this. If there's any further, anything further you would like to add, or David, if there's anything further that you would like to add as well, I'll give the floor to Bill first.
I think that it's clear that there's a lot of interest in this, and it certainly is going to warrant another form. But we're establishing, we have a page already, which hopefully everybody's been on, but it's on can navigate to it from the Maynard site. And what I would like to do, if we don't, because we're not going to get to everybody tonight, but we can create a FAQ page. And so if we if we get some some good feedback from this, we'll address that. And and then you could reach out to me. We'll create a mailing list that we, I think most of you are on the mailing list already. But we will make sure that we have additional additional forms as well.
And Bill, I can work with you on answering questions that have been put in the chat to incorporate into the FAQ if that's where you want to go.
Thank you, Ralph.
May I ask a question?
Hold on one second, and if you don't mind. David, did you have any?
No, what I would, first off, I want to thank everybody who's part of the the team to come up with the, you know, with the vision. This is the vision of Powder Mill, the Powder Mill Corridor is, I I think, extremely important to the future of Maynard's, you know, development. Because really, as we've discussed as a Maynard Board and as a community, that there's not much else air, not not many other areas in our community that are that are developable at this point. And I think that it's important to have a plan and to understand what the plan is to move forward and to really get excited about it. Some of this stuff was really intriguing and exciting. And when you see some of these photographs from behind some of the buildings that none of us have probably ever even been to and see the opportunities that exist along the river and the potential that is there, it's extraordinarily exciting to see. So I would ask members of the Select Board, Maynard Select Board, if there are any questions that we have. Otherwise, we can continue the conversation at our meetings as we will and presumably have continued meetings with the Planning Board on this issue as we move forward on what the the next steps may be. So if any members of the Maynard Select Board have any comments to make, please feel free to make those comments now with the with the full audience that's here, and then we can bring it up at a future meeting. This is not going to go away. This is the, I think this is the future of of the community. It's just the way we get there. I also think it's important before I like turn the table over to or the floor over to other members of the board that we are well aware, the Select Board and the community in Maynard is well aware of our needs from water and sewer infrastructure that would be required for us to develop somewhat greater opportunity for residential as well as commercial building along that stretch. But we are doing everything we possibly can, and we're getting some good news along the way as to, you know, positive moves forward to get some of our needs accomplished. So that's all good. That's all part of the good news picture as well. And we'll go to a long way in building our future. So members of the board, if you have any comments, feel free to speak up now. I don't see any. So we're done with our portion. So Chris, if you want to take, if you want to take questions from the audience too, you know.
Thanks. Just, yeah, I just have a couple of final things. The Planning Board is, we're planning to set up a for during one of our future meetings, conversation around this. So we're, this is, this will become a item that gets discussed at and at a Planning Board hearing in the future. Bill, do we, we don't have that scheduled yet, do we? Our next meeting, next time we're going to meet for this?
We don't have that scheduled. We have a couple of other special projects. Oh, I'm sorry, we 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 did have a Powder Mill discussion scheduled for forty-five minutes on March eighth. We do.
Okay.
Um, and right.
So for for those that are listening tonight, the next planning board meeting on March eighth, we are setting aside forty-five minutes to to discuss the this corridor initiative. Feel free to please join us, and we will be opening it up to to the public to for 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 input during that time. I will, it's seven oh five, I will take, I'm going to take two questions from the public. First will be from Ann Chang.
Yes, I'm I'm wondering if you have contacted the Maynard Superintendent or the Acton Boxborough High School Superintendent about the Beijing Schools. The reason I ask is that the Beijing School is supposed to bring children from China supposedly, but it's also a charter school which will impact the budgets of both of those high schools. So I'm wondering whether the superintendents of those high schools know about this.
I'm going to allow either David or Greg possibly to answer that question. I don't have that.
Yeah, we've we we are, from the Maynard perspective, the Maynard Schools are very excited about the opportunity of that of that school coming. And there has been a lot of communication with the the Maynard School Committee as well as the superintendent of schools relative to how we can work together with that organization once they come to sort of work together to integrate the two schools. From that's from Maynard's perspective. Can't speak entirely of what the school's plans are, but I know that they are excited about it, looking to to work together. Not looking at it as at as a potential drain at this point, but more so as an opportunity to expand.
Thanks, David. So I there's, I'm going to take one more. So the the point of tonight was to initiate this through the this, the Powder Mill Corridor Initiative through this initial presentation by Ralph. We're going to have lots of further engagement with with the community on this subject. So I'm going to take one more question, and it's a, and it's a caller that I can only read as call-in user one that has its hand raised. If you may, caller, you're welcome to come off mute and ask your question.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, can you please identify yourself for the record?
Yes, Sarah from Acton, and I have a couple of questions. My first question is that during the presentation, I heard a lot of things about encouraging that the design guidelines, et cetera, will encourage this or encourage that. And I, in my experience, is that if it's not required, then it's not going to happen. So I encourage it to be required to have river access and to have all this wonderful stuff that you are proposing, because in my experience, it just doesn't happen. I mean, I don't know what pictures there are because I can't see it, but that's the first thing. The second thing is regarding water. It's my understanding that that you're, that Maynard is having trouble finding water. I know that Acton, there's a lot of people concerned about water in Acton and the P pass situation, et cetera. And so I'm wondering whether anybody's looked at how much growth and development that the aquifers can handle, because I believe each of the towns get their water from ground sources. So I'd like answers to both of those questions, and I'll take that offline. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Two wonderful points. In general, I believe Ralph's recommendations were to encourage us to adopt certain zoning regulations themselves. And you're correct, Sarah. Sometimes if things are important, it's important to put them into the regs as requirements. So it's always something that's a good point to consider. Regarding water, my, I can't comment on on Acton. I'm not familiar with Acton's scenario. But for Maynard, Maynard's been spending a lot of time planning for water water sustainability for the town. And this is one of our highest priorities. It's in the master plan. And it's something that is on the radar of of all veteran staff and all all the different boards that are participating in support of this community. Greg or David, is there anything further you want to say on the question regarding water?
No, I think you've said it quite well. We are certainly well aware of the concerns that we have. I think perhaps the perception that Acton might have about Maynard's situation with water may be a bit exaggerated. We have some difficulties, but we're not we're not at a critical stage. We could be if we expanded too fast and too far without being aware. But I think we're comfortable where we're at, and I think that we have good things on the in on the horizon, good news to come very soon.
Thanks, David. Okay, so that's that's all for tonight on the Powder Mill Corridor Initiative. Ralph, thanks again for your time. Bill Menzner, thank you for helping us line this all up, and thanks to all the other members that have contributed.
Thank you. The Select Board can move to adjourn if there's a motion.
So moved.
And we'll have to roll call. Chris Silva.
Yes.
Justine St. John.
Yes.
Jeff Swanberg.
Yes.
Armin Dear-Percurian.
Yes.
And I am a yes as well. Thank you very much, Chris, for your indulgence and your cooperation. Good luck with the rest of your meeting this evening.
Thanks, David. Appreciate it.
Take care.
Thanks, everybody.
And thank you to all the residents who are here and the and our neighbors as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bear with me for a second. I just have to open up the agenda. All right, that was item number one. For those that are that are on the call, the the agenda is available on the Maynard website under under planning board. And that was the first item for tonight was the joint meeting between the Select Board and the Planning Board for this presentation for the Powder Mill Corridor Initiative. Item three is minutes. We're going to table the minutes later. Item four is the continuance of a public hearing for Maynard Crossing. And this was for a request and a modification to site plan and special permit for building R three in digital digital way at Maynard Crossing. Bill, it's my understanding that the applicant is requesting a continuance. Can can you confirm and can you just let us know what date they they are asking to continue to?
Yes, I can. There's the applicant requested to continue to the March eighth meeting. On it, we thought that might be the case at the last meeting, so we'd scheduled that ahead in the event they did request the continuance. I did get revised plans. I didn't, I know I was bombing the board today with emails, so I figured I'd send them tomorrow. But so they would, I would request that they be continued to the March eighth meeting.
And can you remind me, do we need to open up the meeting and then have a vote for continuance?
You can, you can just, you can continue the item.
I'll move to continue this item to the March eighth meeting. Do I have a second?
Yes, sir, I have a second.
Thanks, Jim. All in favor by roll call, Jim Coleman?
Yes.
Bill Crenshaw?
Yes.
Natalie Robert?
Yeah.
Bob Brown?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well. So that's five zero, Bill, to continue to the March eighth meeting.
Thank you.
I will open up the public hearing for item number five. This is the eighty-six Powder Mill Road, which is the Assabet, this which which is the proposed at future location of the Assabet River Co-op. I believe it's just Assabet Co-op. Isn't isn't that correct? Sam, I know we have it in our notes as Assabet River Co-op, but I believe it's just Assabet Co-op.
It's our our DBA is Assabet Co-op Market. Thanks for the clarification.
Thank you. Yeah. Our apologies for for getting it wrong in the paperwork for the for the notice tonight. So so this is how I'd like to proceed for for tonight's hearing and for for those that were here about maybe a month ago. Thank you for joining the last meeting a month ago that discussed the Assabet Co-op application. And so we're here to from a continuance from that. So we're going to pick off kind of where we left off. First, Bill, I'd like to go to the to the staff report, if you don't mind. I just want to make sure that we're still on track for the actions required that are at the end of the step, end of the staff report.
Yeah, you'll have to give me a minute to pull that up, Mr. Chair.
I I can share it. I'll share the screen. Right. So if you can see here the actions that from the initial staff report that were required were for for actions. One was finding if the proposed changes consistent with the special permit criteria, which is pretty standard for what we do. And then a vote to modify the existing special permit, a vote to grant waivers, and then a vote to modify the existing site plan as such. I just want to make sure that that this is, this is still what we're working towards. Is there anything that we need to add?
Mister Babrowski today, on behalf of the applicant, we didn't believe there was going to be a reduction plan in planning, sorry, in parking. And and in this case, the applicant has submitted a request to reduce the the parking, and I think Mr. Babrowski is going to discuss that. It was a minor reduction, I believe, two spots. So that would be something we would add to items two and four.
Okay, but we're not going to add, we don't have any item five. We have the items one through four still.
No, no, I don't think we do.
Okay, thanks. Okay, I would. My plan tonight to the board would be to first allow the applicant to present the changes that have been made since the last hearing. And then I would like to discuss with Wayne and staff, any feedback that remains that's still pending. Is there anything else, particular members of the board that would we would like to discuss besides the details of this of the changes or modifications? Is there anything else, big picture, that you want to make sure that we discuss tonight? I'm hearing none. So let's go ahead. Sam, may I turn it over to you to reintroduce your team that's supporting you and allow allow your team to present the updated versions of of the plans?
Absolutely. Thank you. And for those who don't know me, I'm Sam McCormick. I'm the General Manager of Assbet Co-op Market. We're a startup co-op looking to open a physical location in Maynard. Mark Babrowski is representing the project as attorney. We have the Kaufmans, who are the developers who own the plaza. Michael Kaufman, Phil Henry is a civil engineer working on the project. Wayne Kiefner is representing the parking and traffic engineering done on the project. And Michelle Driscoll is here as the architect on the project. So that should represent the team present to both present and answer questions this evening. And I'll hand it over to Mark, I believe.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, Board members. Mark Babrowski, my office is in Damon Mill. I think you're right with regard to the staff report conclusions, but we do need to modify the special permit. We'll go through the criteria in a moment or two, and we also will go through the criteria for special site plan review modification. As Bill indicated, I did submit a letter today requesting a reduction of the parking from a hundred and two to a hundred spaces. We did that because of two things. Number one, at the last hearing, the board suggested that a further reduction of that minor nature would improve the ADA parking locations. And secondly, it would make it easier for vehicles to access and service the dumpster location. So we're sort of following your lead on that, and I'm sure that we can pick up on that as we make comments. So without further ado, I'd like to ask our engineer to discuss his reaction to the February seventeenth, twenty twenty-two letter submitted by VHB. And Phil Henry will take it from there.
Hi, good evening. My name is Phil Henry with Civil Design Group. We're the engineers on the project. I think probably the most effective way to go through this is we submitted a full set of plans, but I've also submitted a site plan that that highlights the changes. So perhaps I will share that and and work off of that site plan. If and if we need to dive into it any further, I could pull up the full site plans. So can everybody see this sheet here?
Yes, I can see it, Bill. Thank you.
Okay. So what I'll do is I'll work from 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 my left to right on on this screen. And what you see here in yellow are the modifications that we've that we've made. And then there was one eleventh hour modification that came in yesterday or this morning that I will I will close my discussion with that. So so just working from left to right, and and all of these are in responses to either our our last discussion at our hearing or the review letter by by Mr. Amico. So again, so working from left to right, we're committing to adding ADA tip-down ramps at at the driveways. Particularly, I'll start here at this entrance only. We've also added a sidewalk that will allow walkers along along Route sixty-two to to get into the shopping center. We've committed to restriping the the spaces along the west side of the building and then reallocating the ADA spaces. If you recall, we had a conversation about that as well. And in the process, also redoing the sidewalk along the storefront with ADA accessible ramps. We're adding another ADA ramp on the east side of the westerly entrance. We have removed the parking space here and cut in a little accessible walkway here from the sidewalk into a striped area and then across the the other lot as well. We've committed to modifying the this this sidewalk in this ramp area. If you recall, those that are familiar with the site, there's like a an asphalt haunch in here that has a pretty significant ramp, and it's it's not a smooth transition, so we're going to be smoothing out this transition here. It won't be ADA accessible, but it it's certainly an improvement over the existing condition. And then on the easterly edge of the of the lot, we're redoing the ADA ramps here and the apron here into this driveway. We are also striping small areas along the entrance here. And then we're putting some signage that would tell everyone that you cannot travel west down this driveway. And then along the rear of the property, along the east side, removing the trash area, if you recall, they were, it was it was sort of like scattered and and staggered in in this area here. We've shifted it over just to make sure that there was no it, there weren't going to be any any issues with with the trailer loading areas here. And because of that, we we restripped this this row here to the to the east of the of the trash area. And then the the eleventh hour change that I that I I noted a few minutes ago was we had discussed at our last hearing adding a striped area that would traverse from the rear of these spaces all the way to the rear of these easterly spaces and providing a like a five-foot-wide striped area. We have since removed that based on Wayne's letter, his clean letter back to us. And I get, I'll let Wayne speak for himself, but I think the spirit of his comment was that it gave folks perhaps a false sense of security with walking behind these vehicles. So we, so we had submitted revised plans earlier this month, and then we just resubmitted. We got the letter. I think Thursday of last week or Wednesday of last week, we grouped up as as a team, and then we we decided to remove that. Although the 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 original or the second submission is is still with planning as well, so we can have that discussion. But but you have both plans. The town has either plan for discussion. So that that highlights all the all the general changes, and I'm happy to answer any other specific questions.
Thanks, Phil. Thanks, Mark. Is it okay if I take it back to the board? Is there anything else, Bill, Sam, Mark, that you would like to discuss and present on?
No, when the board is just finished with its discussion and perhaps VHB has delivered its report, insolation will walk you through the criteria.
Okay, thank you, Mark. Um. Let's, yeah, let's go. Let's yeah, let's go to Wayne. Wayne, are you on tonight?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, right here.
Thank you, Wayne. I appreciate it. Maybe start with that last last item that Phil talked about. And then if you could also brief us an overall view from from your perspective of items that have been changed that you can confirm and any items that remain pending for discussion.
I'll be glad to. It's actually very easy summary. The applicant as a whole worked together, and I believe they addressed all the comments that we had in our pre in our first comment letter. Phil and I talked several times about this, and they acquiesced and made the modifications that we recommended and that Phil and I talked about. We were pleased with those. They addressed all our concerns. The only remaining issue had to be had to do with the the striped area that was provided on the last set of plans that Phil described. Thank you, Phil, for outlining that. And I understand I do understand that that came at based on some discussion at the last board meeting. But Phil summarized it well. After looking at it, it felt we felt that that created a very false sense of security for people walking there behind parked cars. And we recommend from our perspective that the people, you know, the patron, just be allowed to walk through the drive aisle as they would in any other large large parking lot facility where people are leaving a store and walking through a drive aisle. So we recommend removal of that. And as Phil said, you're welcome to talk with amongst the board about that. You have both plans. I'm sure Phil can share the other one if if the board desires. But they've addressed everything satisfactori satisfactorily, and I think they're in good shape. One thing to note, and I'm sure Mark will go over this, they have requested waivers for a majority of typical site plan components, so those have to just be voted on in some capacity. I'm sure the board doesn't want to do each one. So I'll I'll let you I'll let the board and Mark discuss the most prudent way of proceeding with those waiver requests.
Thanks, Wayne. I I'll I'll speak for myself on the the walk aisle subject. My intent on supporting the comments made by the board last meeting was that the intent was to just see if there's what is the safest operation from an operation standpoint? What is the safest way we can mitigate any traffic concerns with pedestrians? And it sounds like the engineers have discussed thoughtfully and thoroughly, and that this is the recommendation put the recommendation put forward is is with safety at the heart of this. Can I can I just get the confirmation from Wayne and Phil on that, that that's what I'm hearing, and that's my understanding?
So I think from my perspective, Mr. Chairman, I think, you know, ideally, would it be would it be the best scenario that there's a pedestrian route from the front door of the store all the way to the parking lot to the east? Yes, but given the fact that this is a reoccupancy of an existing building with an existing parking lot that was built in the sixties that clearly is not fully ADA compliant, and I think the applicant is doing from our perspective, more than more than a a honest effort to make what they can ADA compliant. I think that we would recommend that that drive aisle be eliminated. I'm sorry, that striped pathway be be eliminated as proposed and as discussed at the last at the last hearing.
And and it sounds like it's that adding that striped aisle could potentially cause more challenges than it it could solve.
From our perspective, we think it was it would more of a detriment to have that there. I mean, if you if you picture that, people are parked there. And let's say a a patron with a cart or a handicap person is going in that striped aisle that looks like it's intended for pedestrians, that person, that vehicle could just back up right into that person and not at any fault to their own, because they may not be able to see that person. So again, the words in Phil said it, a false sense of security, that it's a safe place to walk. They're better off walking down the middle of the aisle where people can see them.
Thanks, Wayne. I so one item I'd like to discuss in this meeting, and first I'm going to turn over the board, but I I don't want to I don't want to forget about it. I do want to discuss deliveries and truck patterns briefly, just to get a sense of where we're at with that. But at this time, I'm going to turn it over to the board for any any comments or feedback on what was presented. Please just speak up.
I just have one quick question. When we're talking about that striped area, the current plan that I have in front of me that's also on the screen, so is that what the striping would be? Or are we discussing, what are we? What what are our options that we're discussing? What's in front of us? And then also none of the striping being there, that parking space going back there or just?
Natalie, if I could, Phil, would you be able to share the the other plan that was previously included in the set?
Yeah, let me see if I could do this. I'm going to see if I could do like a side by side.
Sorry, I have the plans in front of me.
No worries. Let's see. Can everybody see two both both screens?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, so I'm going to zoom in. So so the simply the difference that we're discussing is is this striped area here versus no striped area here.
So just to be clear for the record, Phil, the one on the right has the proposed walkway that is now not being proposed.
Yeah, and keep in mind, it's a it's a walkway in the sense that it's striped. There's no there's no material difference. There's no nothing's raised or above grade. It's it's just pavement striped or not striped.
Natalie, does that help?
Yes, thank you very much.
Any any other thoughts, Natalie, to share?
Um, no, I I the proposed sidewalk connection looks great to me. I think that having that spot removed and striped will give people you know, a way to at least safely enter the driving aisle without, you know, just squeezing between cars. Yeah.
Thanks, Natalie. Phil, could you go back to the to your initial your to your initial site plan that you were presenting on initially? Just that one? Guess the one on the left. Thanks. And just scroll over left if you could. It I'll I guess I'll just do a roll call here. Jim, do you have any comments or thoughts to share?
Yes, I do, Chris. I have, actually, I have three major concerns. Number one is one that you just mentioned, and that is the ability for the deliveries into the new loading dock in the very rear. I cannot see any way, shape or form that the way it is now concepted that a tractor trailer can come in or even a big straight job can come in, make a turn up to that last aisle, and then back in around and in to the the new loading dock without incurring a lot of traffic snarling in that area. And I'd like to have somebody address that.
Okay, would you like to give us number two and three, Jim, or would you like to wait?
Well, number two is right next to it, and that is the enclosure that they propose for the dumpsters. They're talking about a six-foot-high black chain fence. Number one, it should be eight foot high because the dumpsters themselves are higher than the than the 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 six foot. And secondly, I want to know whether it's a an enclosure all the way around or just open on the front side. That would be number two. Number three, I still have some concerns about the forty-foot-by-forty-foot area that has the ATM area in it now that is owned by somebody else and what might occur in the future in there. So those are the three.
Okay, let's if it's if you if the applicants agree, maybe just one at a time. Can you just talk through the dumpster enclosure first? Maybe Sam or or Phil?
Sure. Do you want to take that one?
Yeah, I could take I could take two and one.
Yeah, Phil, and I'm I'm this is Michael. I'm happy to to let the board know that I have absolutely no issue at all with eight-foot-high versus a six-foot-high fence. And of course, we intended to have all four sides enclosed. So I guess I can quickly put that concern to rest.
Thank you.
Say that that that'll, you know, no, no big deal there.
Um, can and can we just discuss what whether six or eight is appropriate? I I just I appreciate Jim's thoughts on this, and I'm not doubting that they're correct that they're incorrect. Is can we just would like to start discuss it from a technical standpoint? Is is eight appropriate? Is six appropriate? What does it tie back to our regulations? Phil and Wayne, maybe this is for you guys.
I actually, I cannot recall. I cannot recall the eight-foot requirement. I think that the last ones I've dealt with were six-foot. But I don't disagree with Jim that eight-foot may be more appropriate. I guess we could either research that a little bit more, or the board could leave that with Bill and I to resolve with the applicant to make sure it looks reasonable prior to them putting it up.
You know, Wayne, let let Wayne, can I interject for just a minute? The the reason I'm saying eight foot is number one, it's right next to the river. I want to capture anything that might flow over. And number two, if we can look at what happens up to one twenty-nine Parker Street with the six-foot-high enclosures they have there. People, when they're loading the dumpsters, leave the top of those things open. And right right beside the river, I don't want to stop going into the rip.
I think the big difference, everybody, is that an eight-foot fence would just require a building permit. A six-foot would not, from our standpoint. So it's and if you wanted to leave as as Wayne suggested, some flexibility based on the specifics, but I think the intent that Jim's made is clear, and I think it makes sense to me. And that would be the only change that I'm aware of that would be. So in this case, permits are anywhere, you know, anyway.
Well, I just want to make sure that if that if it does need a building permit, then there we're not in violation of anything else that would require us to have to come back. That's my only concern there.
This is why I'm looking at it from a regulatory and technical standpoint, guys.
Yeah, we I'm sorry, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, go ahead.
I'm confident we could craft something where they could that we could be flexible enough if there was something that to avoid a potential return trip.
How about we proceed like this? Let's let's proceed with working towards an eight-foot fence solution. Because it does sound like there are technical reasons to do so, and that the applicant is is willing to consider that as well. And if there is and if there's a if there's a roadblock, bring it back to the board. How does that sound? Is that unreasonable?
I prefer, Mr. Chairman, to say that in the alternative, if there's a roadblock, we will do X, Y, or Z.
Okay, yeah, see, Mark, that's why you're on this call. Thank you.
Mister Mister Chairman, can I just throw one more thing into the mix so that we don't have to talk about this again? I know it was discussed at least internally at Town Hall, but I don't know if we ended up resolving it during this during the planning boards meeting. I think the the town's preference, while we have no objection to the black chain link, black coated chain link fence, I believe we were looking to have slats installed in there for visibility. And I thought I'll defer to Phil on this because I don't remember what was stated, but I'm not sure we agreed to have the slats installed. Again, not that it's a big deal, but just so we can talk about it all at once.
It was desirable of slats installed.
Okay, thank you, Bill.
All right, may I say something? The concrete pad on on where the dumpsters are on, is there a minimum minimum depth or how high is that concrete above the ground, above the I should it is it four inches, ten inches, the concrete pad?
Oh, I I think I know what you're saying. And is it is it flood? Is the concrete pad flush to the asphalt?
Typically, the intent is to have it flush, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, okay. And it's flush here? Is that the design? Yes. And that it's the concrete pad is the same elevation as the adjoining.
I just thought it had to be about four inches high off the ground.
I'm not familiar with that requirement. For dumpster pad, the intent is just the only reason that that's not asphalt and it is concrete is because the dumps is being slammed up and down by the equipment, just ends up beating the heck out of the asphalt. So that's why you prefer concrete.
Okay, thank you.
And and usually the concrete is four inches thick, perhaps. Maybe that's what you're thinking, and even maybe six inches thick, so.
Okay, thank you. Some dumpsters are left on, you know, just right on the pavement without a pad, without a concrete pad.
Yeah, as as Wayne was saying, though, like particularly like in in like July and August, the the asphalt is a flexible material, so it's liable to 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 move, whereas concrete's a rigid material.
So the depth is is to the ground or is it four inches?
No, it's 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 deep. It's it's going to be flush with the asphalt.
Okay, thank you.
Bill Crenshaw, would you like to add to this?
Yeah, can can you zoom in a little on that dumpster enclosure? So a minor comment and then a question. Minor comment is with the dumpster fence abutting the parking stall to the right, we now require an extra two feet of width, so you can actually open your door. So a little thing to think of, but I'm curious of how does where's the gate? Is this like a thirty-eight-foot-long swing arm that comes out that provide access? I don't understand where the gate is.
Yeah, that's yeah, that's a good question. So the actual enclosure, so when we're preparing construction plans, we'll work with 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 whoever, either Sam or Michael, or just to see how best to to break up this fence. I I would envision the the fences, particularly the the enclosures or the fence, the front fence itself would would sort of step in with the dumpsters so that each dumpster has its own opening per se. So I would I would envision this fencing not being as expansive as it's shown, but but rather stepping in and out as these dumpsters graduate. So that that would be my that would be my that that's what we would be doing. The fence itself, the concrete, the the concrete will stay as is. It's better to have that more expansive, but I agree with you. The fences need to step in and out so that so that so that the enclosure can you can open appropriately.
All right, thanks, Chris. I'm all good with that.
All right, regarding regarding the concrete pad for the dumpster in the enclosure. Okay, let's so I think we've discussed the pad and the enclosure substantially, at least for now. It Bill, what do you what do you advise doing with this eight to six-foot thing? Should we just, how should we proceed?
I think that well, actually, I'm kidding. Email now from a mass building code now allows seven feet. And it's basically a six-foot-high stockade fence listed above the ground. But I I think that as Mark had alluded to, if there was a problem, I think just crafting, man, I'm not sure what problem exactly we would be encountering that would require a trip back to the planning board, but you can never be sure, I suppose. But
So 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 seven doesn't require you're saying seven doesn't require a building?
That's what
Is that what you're alluding to?
I have a board member from another board who is a builder who just emailed me.
The the intent of Jim's comment is to make sure that the fence is high enough so that it's it's mitigating debris concerns.
Understood.
And obviously, that ties back to the size of the dumpster. If you have a small four-foot dumpster, you may not need an eight-foot fence. If you have an eight-foot-tall dumpster, obviously, you need something larger, but I'm not suggesting you have eight-foot dumpster coming in.
And we also we also have the ability, if the board chose to prove we could can prove the petition, we could condition that if there is a problem with debris, X happens or whatever.
I I don't want the board to say we want an eight-foot fence. We want what we're saying is we want fence to mitigate the concern.
Understood.
Eight eight could be fine. Eight to eight to eight sounds like a safe number to me. Maybe we proceed with eight guys, Phil, Michael, and then and then Maybe we proceed with eight guys, Phil, Michael, and then, and then, um. Maybe we proceed with eight. Obviously we'll approve the waiver if there's a waiver or. Things of that nature.
As I've stated a little while ago, what, whatever the board wants in this regard, I, I'm flexible here for sure.
And I believe we, we, we would like to see slats. That, that is, I don't think that's in the, been the building code. But it's obviously a best practice from our standpoint, at least.
Okay.
Okay.
Um, Jim, does that sound good to you?
Yeah, it sounds good to me. I, I'm really mainly concerned about the river access. If it was on a flat surface someplace, maybe not so much, but I, uh, I, and the, to, to give you an answer. Uh, dumpsters, normal dumpsters come in two types. The ones that are, uh, accessed and pulled up from the back and the ones that are tipped over from the top. The top ones are usually about seven foot, two or three inches tall, uh, with the covers on and the. Uh, ones that are dumped from the back are generally about six foot, six inches.
Alright, can, um, can we go back to the trucking item that Jim Coleman brought up?
Mister, Mister Chairman, can I just expand on this for one second? I'm sorry. I think just sometimes a picture's worth a thousand words. Um, Phil, can I just steal and share my screen for one second?
Yeah.
So just so everybody can see this, um. I need to just move this out of the way. This is a picture of what was installed, uh, at thirty-one Main Street. Um, and that is a smaller roll-off dumpster. Uh, I believe that most, um, the most industrial dumpsters. Uh. The reason I'm showing you this, that's a, I believe that's a six foot fence. You can see it's roughly about the same. Height as those, as those roll-off, but to Jim's point, if there are large dumpsters out there, maybe an eight foot would be more appropriate. Um, I just wanted to show you this just for, for, uh, so you can have a visualization. Uh, and maybe we can kind of put this issue kind of to bed so that the applicant doesn't have to deal with this afterwards. Maybe just make a decision. On how you wanna, how you wanna proceed with the height.
I'm, I'm fine with just discussing it as noting it as eight foot fence.
Great. Let me just figure out how to stop sharing, cause, uh, right here, sorry. There we go. Thank you.
Okay, thanks Wayne. Let's, um. Uh, Sam and Bill or team, uh, can you discuss, uh, trucking, the concerns that, um. Jim had about trucking, maybe, maybe to discuss size of trucks, your, your belief that will, that you encounter. There's sort of trucking and, and part and, um, loading sort of, uh, plan.
Um, I kind of, uh, I was just gonna start from an operational perspective and Jim, I appreciate you bringing up these concerns. So, uh, this has been a topic of conversation honestly since, uh. Uh, the co-op, since we started talking with the coffins about the site, we agree with you that to solve for the trucking was our first priority. If we couldn't get trucks in with food, then we can't put food on the shelf. So, um, what we did is we talked with our. Largest, uh, future supplier, UNFI. And we talked with them about the size of trucks that they, the largest truck that they run, that we could potentially have to bring into the space. That truck is the, the fifty that's shown on the plan. Um, that Phil ran through their system and they have a truck analysis system and Phil could speak more to that. But from the operational perspective, the way that this works, and I believe Wayne, you did address this in some of the comments, we did have this in the engineering letter. That our operational plan is for the largest truck deliveries, they have to be night or early morning deliveries. Because we can't deal with full traffic in the parking lot, that you're correct, and that we wouldn't be able to. Bring the trucks in and back them in the way that we need to. So the largest truck deliveries for our operation. Would be nighttime delivery hours or early morning prior to six AM in that timeframe. And again, um, and this is where Phil could discuss more, um, this sized truck that was modeled, uh, you could. Phil could speak to the, the software, uh, the turn software and how that's managed.
Sure. Um, so as you could see on the screen are the, is the WB fifty truck and. We, we've shown some snapshots of, of where it is on its, on its track. So as it, as it enters into. The, the driveway here. Uh, it, it then traverses down this drive aisle and then loops into this drive aisle and then makes its way back in. There is. There's a truck, a WB fifty truck shown at this loading dock. As well as, as the new loading dock and. One of the. You know, after our last hearing, one of the main concerns is, was let's, let's take a look at the dumpster locations again, just to make sure that there's sufficient space. For, for the existing loading dock. And that was in part some of the genesis of why we moved the dumpsters themselves. Um, so I, I would actually argue that, that, that the existing dock is the more critical dock, uh, in terms of getting access, just because there's. There's, there's less recovery length for, for a trailer truck. So as you could see here, I, our software is, is conservative. Um, there's limitations on, on the turning. Um. So. You know, with that being said, it, 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 it appears to, it appears to be tight, but, but doable. So. It, it's, it's, you know, we don't have the luxury of, of a, of a. You know, a luxurious or large loading area. It's, we're working within existing condition and we're bounded by. Buildings, um, striping, uh, you know, obviously the, the, the river's edge not expanding anymore impervious. So. I guess I'm not sure what else I could say other than it's, it, we agree that it, it's tight, but it's, but it's doable and that's been reinforced by. By folks at operations.
Uh, may I ask you a question, Phil?
Sure.
Yes, Phil, have you ever driven a tractor trailer?
I have not.
I have. I've been a tractor trailer driver for seventy years. I can tell you right off the bat, you can mull all you want. You're not gonna get in the way you got the, uh, parking striping the way it is. I can tell you how you can do it, if you'll allow me to. If you'll, uh, pull up that first, uh. Where you have, yeah. Can you enlarge this whole, that, the whole area a little bit?
Sure. Whoops, I did the opposite.
Yeah. Good. Now, uh, move your cursor over to where the, uh, uh, the. I, I, I'm pointing at and now you can't see me, I know. Uh, come back toward the building. A bit more. Alright, now pull it down toward the street a little bit. Okay. You have a crosshatch right in, in front of you, right there. And a pole right on the right-hand side. See the poles? Right to your right. There's a telephone pole right there.
That square box there, yeah.
I'm sorry.
It's the square box, is that?
Yeah, that's where boxes is a telephone pole. If you eliminate those two places right there, yeah, those two. And the two go straight ahead now toward the river. That one and the one to the right. If you eliminate those, those spaces. You will be able to get in, uh, uh, into that other lane. And, and allowed to be able to back up and then pull back out again without a problem.
Can I respond, Jim? I, cause we're in agreement here, I think. So, um, when we had this discussion in response to the engineering letter, I believe that Wayne Amico brought up some similar points to what you're discussing. And part of the operational plan is that we would preserve those spaces with employee parking or cones. In the hours previous to our largest delivery, so that when the trucks come in, all of those spaces that you just discussed would be free and the truck could drive through that area.
Uh, Sam, I, I agree. It's very nice and, and concept, but you have other places in there that have deliveries, right? The, the, uh, the, uh, sub shop has deliveries. A Coca-Cola tractor trailer comes in to deliver that. To them. There are other deliveries for other people. I'm suggesting that if you do this now, you eliminate any problems in the future with anybody coming in. That you did not plan on coming in, and I don't want anybody to. Park in that those, uh, that yellow area and then walk with a carriage and maybe run into a, a truck backing up. That's my concern.
I might ask. I was just gonna say, Jim, wouldn't those other stores already be getting those deliveries now?
Exactly.
Like if they're. If they're getting those deliveries now. And making use of that part of the parking lot, which is not planning on being restripped, right, right?
Well, right, right now, uh, Nat, you're right, but there's not much use. Uh, of, of cars being parked in that area. I'm expecting that when the, uh, new market starts, that this parking lot will be jammed all the time. I'm just trying to concern, get, be concerned about it now rather than when anybody gets hurt later on.
Certainly.
Yeah, thanks, Jim. It's, it sounds like there, this issue. Has been raised and is discussed, and it sounds like the current plan is to deal with, with it from an operational standpoint instead of a site plan design standpoint. I guess, Jim, are you, are you comfortable with it allowing it as an operational standpoint or is this something?
No.
You want to see on the site plan?
I think you have to eliminate those few parking places to make sure that there's no problem because. Right now, uh, people coming into you, going in and out of the sub shop, parking those. Places right there. Anything goes wrong with their plans are coming in at night or this and that, and you got a problem. I just don't want to be a problem.
Okay, thanks, Jim.
You're welcome.
Let's, let's, let's just let that one sit. I want to get other feedback from other board members. Oh, um. Sorry, Jim brought up the ATM. Alright, ATM challenge, um. Maybe, I, I think Jim is, as I recall from your, the last meeting as well, you brought this up. Uh, I think that the, the thing you're, you're talking about is if the ATM building. Decides to build in its allowable buildable space.
Yes.
And, and Bill Crenshaw, your hand raises, is there something you want to add to this?
Uh, no, I'll roll back to a truck comment after you finish the ATM.
Okay, um. And maybe, um, maybe Mark or Michael could help out with this. I, I think you understand Jim's concern. What, what are, what are the impacts? If the ATM building owner decides to use its maximum building space in the future. What are the impacts?
We lose, we lose three, three, three parking spaces.
We lose three parking spaces. Okay.
Yep.
Jim, does that help?
Well, it, it does until we start to talk about traffic flow and so on and so forth, but I. I'll concede on that particular issue and deal with it when, when and if it ever comes back.
Uh, I think that would happen when the applicant would necessarily have to submit a application to modify the site plan.
Okay. And would it, Mark, would it be, and I'm not trying to get your formal opinion of this, just to get an understanding, would it be this, this site planner, or would it be a different site plan, since it's a different application?
Well, this is, the, this is the site plan of record really for the entire. Uh, address, so I think it would be this site plan.
Okay. Thanks, Mark. That's helpful. Um, Bill Crenshaw, you're up.
Um, coming about the truck delivery times, it was mentioned that. The intent was to make the big truck come at night or very early morning, definitely before six AM. So it just reminded me of all the issues over at, um, Market Basket, so I'm. Musing about whether we should have the same restrictions on number of trucks. Um, during the late night hours as we have over at Market Basket and I kind of assume it should be fine here, but. Just to be fair, we should be considering the, the neighbors too.
Yeah, thanks, Bill. Um, Sam, you want to walk us through it from the operational standpoint? What do you expect for truck deliveries? Timing?
Yeah, so the plan for that is mostly due to the footprint of the space. So the way that the interior of the space, and when we submit for building permit, this will be in the plans. Um, we have approximately two thousand square feet that encompasses backstock, storage, kitchen. Um, the operational plan, which is the current grocery trend, is to try to stock out on the floor as much as possible. So that would be receiving these larger deliveries in the evening hours, early morning hours. With the goal that our staff will be able to put the product out on the shelves prior to opening or as much as possible. And in doing so, we'd aim to spread those deliveries out on average. So I can't quote this right now. Because deliveries are slightly unpredictable with COVID, but on average, you'd be looking at your large deliveries being received three times a week. On an average schedule of a Monday, Wednesday, Friday or Saturday. Um, and we'd be looking at not as many trucks as Market Basket. I think we're talking about two to three trucks at most. Um, we'd be looking at one large delivery from our main supplier. And possibly one large delivery truck from our main produce supplier. A lot of our local items. And products like that would be received during daytime, regular hours, and those would be all smaller truck deliveries, much smaller trucks. So realistically, our numbers are very low for these nighttime deliveries and not every night of the week. I hope that's helpful, but I'm happy to answer more questions.
Bill Crenshaw, was that helpful?
Yeah, I'm still mulling over whether.
Yeah.
That becomes a condition or something, but. I mean, that, that's a good story. I like it.
What's, do you mind me asking what conditions ended up being? Working better for the community? Cause that's something good for me to know as we plan the operations.
No, Bill, this, I mean, you brought this up, so you go ahead.
I, 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 you know, I, I can't remember what we have over at, at Market Basket, but I'm just thinking.
Okay.
If it worked in Market Basket, it was appropriate there, then it shouldn't be more than that here, and I'm sure it won't be.
Yeah, I, I think the Market Basket example, Sam, is that, um. That we were considering and we considered and implemented a, uh, site plan. That included limited early morning and late night deliveries and limited. Or eliminated weekend deliveries. I, I, I forget where we exactly fell out with it. Um, but it was in consideration for non-working hours, residents to enjoy quiet time during non-working hours, essentially. That was the, the gist of it. I don't remember what the details were, you know, how many trucks early morning, how many trucks late at night, but that was, the thought was to be considerative of noise.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I just, I'm gonna pop the manual in the, um, chat too, and it has everything in there.
Yeah, and I don't think Bill Crenshaw is, uh, advising that we need to have a operations manual. We have a, an approved operations manual with. With main or crossing, and that's not, I don't think that's where we're headed here. I think more generally it's to bring up the concern of, um, you know, just general concern of making sure we're the neighbors. That's all. Okay, um, Bill Crenshaw, did you have anything else you would like to discuss?
Uh, I did have. Two, um, topics over back at the angle parking. Uh, one, one little one and. One conversation topic for the board. So can we zoom in on that? But just one little thing for. Engineers to figure out later. I, I noticed that. Parking spaces fronting up against the sidewalk have bollards five feet on center. We gotta make sure they don't block the accessible aisle from the accessible parking spaces, like. It's been illustrated, so. Just a little thing for them to think about when they actually build it. Um. My other comment though is in regards to the, uh. The work on the ramps in the public right of way on that sidewalk and. While I really like that and it's wonderful and good, I'm just wondering. If we're gonna be doing some big powder mill road thing. I'm not quite sure. Those, that geometry is gonna be the final design, so. I'm just kind of throwing out there for the board that, you know, if this stuff is only in place for three years and, and then it has to get torn up and redone as part of a bigger project. Is that okay or? Is it okay? We just don't do that in anticipation of more work on Powder Mill? It just seems odd to do all that work and then it goes away relatively soon.
Which, are you talking about those? Next to the driveway entrance and over just there, just that area?
Well, they have actually, have it at both, uh, entrances. But I mean, that's only a five foot wide sidewalk with obstructions and right next to the road and, you know, any good redesign of Powder Mill is not gonna have. That. It's gonna be better for pedestrians than that. So I'm just kind of trying to figure out. What's the half-life of those things?
I think you have, uh, greater hopes for the timeline for Powder Mill as a whole. I do, but. I want to be walking down this part of the road. Next year, let's do it.
I want to be walking down this part of the road next year. Let's do it.
Thanks, Nick. Um, any other thoughts from the board on that about, so it generally sounds like there's a resource being devoted to this and it would be quite a waste to devote a resource to it and then have that resource be removed and replaced later on in the future. Is there another way to use that resource more effectively? I don't have any answers. Any thoughts?
Well, entity would be replacing the sidewalks, Mr. Chairman.
In the future, you mean, Mark?
Yes.
I don't know. Bill Crenshaw, Bill Numbsner, maybe can help out with that.
I think that, um, well, let's put the water and capacity and sewer capacity aside for a moment. Um, I see with any new, um, project coming in, an opportunity, uh, to make changes that are consistent with the, uh, the complete streets components and so on. Um, however, um, I mean, to say, like, right now, we haven't designed the zoning even. So it's certainly not gonna happen next year. Um, and I, I think what would happen for kickoff would be uh, one of the, a larger project coming in and a redevelopment, um, that establishes a template that and then that, as things evolve, um, and adjust, they morph into that side. Now, in this case, there's, there is, there's an improvement being made and it's possible that, uh, in a future date, that the, um, the project, uh, is in for another amendment or something like that. And there's, I could see that the, uh, establishing consistency with the, with the, uh, whatever improvements were there would be something that the board would want to very carefully consider.
Thanks, Bill. Um, I'm, I'm, I'm acknowledging that the, um, the building owner is devoting resources to this. And I would hate to obviously rip it out and replace it later on, but I, I'm not sure about the timeline. And there's some unknowns. I'm, I don't know. Is there any creative, creative ideas here? How we could use the resource more effectively?
It's not uncommon, Mr. Chairman, for a payment in lieu to be made. It would be no greater than the cost of doing the work. And the payment in lieu could be held in escrow for a period of time until the next project came along or the town received some money. And that money could be used to augment the funding for a sidewalk improvement project.
So that, that is an option. Um, thank you, Mark. I appreciate your creativity on this. Um, so the board, what, what does the board generally feel about that specifically? Before we get into finding ways to say no to it, how do we feel about that as a possibility to explore?
I would appreciate that as a possibility if we were in a position to have a concrete timeline going forward for any of these larger powder mill road improvements, but as of yet, we do not have the timeline. So I don't feel comfortable sacrificing the conditions going forward for an unknown date.
Yeah.
Hi, Mr. Chair, this is Julia, the assistant planner.
Mike.
Do you mind if I speak?
Yes, go.
Um, so yeah, and, and I agree with Natalie. I, I, I don't think we should, uh, maybe miss this opportunity to get some, uh, improvements in this area, particularly because those, uh, when we look at grant funding, that the, you know, we could apply for sidewalk improvement grants through Massworks. Um, but there's no guarantee that we would get that. So that's my, uh, two cents.
Thanks. Any other thoughts from the board? I'm, I'm, I'm of the thought that there's too many unknowns about the future of the Powder Mill Corridor Initiative to put, put this fund, to put a fund in, in lieu of services in lieu of the work itself. I find that it's, it's, there's not enough for me and not enough certainty to proceed.
Perhaps, uh, Mr. Chairman, may I offer a suggestion?
Yeah, maybe.
So we're undertaking, um, well, hopefully we have not, you know, hopefully we end up awarded with the second phase of the Powder Mill Grant. But as we're part of that, whether we get the grant or not, it's gonna be, uh, the, uh, board is gonna be designing the overlay district with the associated regulations. I see it somehow, uh, it, it done this similar, in, in a similar manner, uh, to the downtown overlay district. As you recall, in the, the DOD, um, there are some requirements specifically that are triggered by, um, future actions, whether it's a new project or an existing project. And if it's something that, uh, is significant or requires a special permit or so on, uh, it kicks in. So at this point, because we're early and, and I, my opinion is that I agree with Natalie and Julia. Uh, we, we are very early in the process. On the other hand, um, we have the opportunity to craft a, a local regulatory framework that acknowledges that we're going to want to have a source of funding from projects for consistency along the corridor. And I think, um, that may be a good way to do it.
I'm not, I didn't quite catch the advice, Bill, on that.
Well, it basically like we do, we, for example, uh, we've created a mechanism. And if you're calling the planning board rules and regulations where we, uh, funding kicks in for, um, bonus units and it goes to, uh, uh, refresh me, Bill Crenshaw, what do we change it? It was to the, uh,
Open space usually.
Open space plan, right. Well, I could see something like that instituted totally for, for, I'm gonna call them complete streets style improvements. So at one point with the new, you know, when the new, uh, we have a new zoning that's gonna be dropped in place next year or next year and a half. Um, future special permits, future, future permitting requires, uh, we have some sort of, um, uh, scale that is, uh, um, it, it's true, and the, the, the funding is triggered when permits are applied for it. So if there's another project that comes in, uh, for this property or other, you know, they're gonna be subject to that contribution or whatever the case may be. It doesn't help us right now kickoff, you know, what, what I know what the board's thinking, you know, with the, with the, um, a complete refitting of this, but I, I think it's a, a practical way forward. Does that make sense, Chris?
Yeah, I, I think I understand you, Bill. I, I, I think my opinion as one board member would be to proceed as the plans are shown. Um, other, other members, feel free to comment further. Uh, Bill Crenshaw, did you have anything else you wanted to share?
No, all good. Thank you.
Bob, Bob Brown, is there anything you'd like to show, Bob?
Yes, thanks, Chris. Um, could we just focus in on that area that says lot six? Um, I had, you know, during the last meeting, I raised the concern about, you know, the accessibility of the a concrete walkway. And I just wanna, um, confirm that we have a common understanding amongst all of us um, as to, um, what's possible, what's not possible here. Um, I understand the need to remove the strip thing that was added. Um, I heard Wayne's concern, you know, that, that not creating a safe condition. Um, but so if we remove the strip thing, then it just means people will walk in the street. Some people walk in the street, but other people have the, the option of using the sidewalk. And my concern was that because the sidewalk didn't have a ramp on it, it wasn't accessible to some people who were, whose mobility is challenged. So, you know, I, I wasn't contemplating that we would ask them to put in ADA wheelchair ramp, which I understood that, that may be an excessive ask here. But I, I just, I, I'm not sure that there's not a third alternative. And I just want to be clear about that with, with Wayne, um, and also with Phil. Um, and, and the third alternative would be an improvement over the existing condition. And if you look at, you know, this, where it says lot six, right underneath it, it says there's an area that says planted. And then there's the area where the walkway is. And you can see that the walkway, the sidewalk juts out past the planted area, which is adjacent to the building. So what I was wondering whether they could just, you know, extend the walkway north-south to eliminate the curb for people that can't step up over a curb. So somebody who was parking, you know, in any of those rear spaces could easily just walk onto that concrete walk instead of having to walk down behind the cars. And so I didn't think it was a, a really, you know, big add-on. And so I'm not sure if it means that, you know, we have to have full code compliance or nothing. And if we don't have to have full code compliance, if we could just improve the condition by adding a little bit of asphalt, you know, and putting in a ramp to create a ramp, you know, next to where that planted area is. You know, you, you would create, you would eliminate, you know, one potential, um, area of hazard for at least some people.
Thanks, thanks, Bob, for bringing that up. Um, Wayne, maybe, and Bill, I see your hand up, but Wayne, quickly, um, if, if an improvement is made on a property such as this, does that improvement need to then be in compliance with ADA or other sort of, um, federal or state frameworks?
My understanding, Mr. Chairman, is yes. And I'm, I'm actually, I'm trying to, it's a very good question that Bob is asking, and I'm trying to look at street view. Um, I had some photographs, but I didn't take one right at that location. Um, I think what Bob is saying is trying to create some type of a wedge of asphalt, maybe between the end of that existing concrete walk and the, uh, entrance doors to the, the mini mall, if you will.
Yeah, to the north.
Yeah. Um, and I think on the plan, it's a little deceiving. Um, well, that may, that may be possible. Um, it certainly, again, to, to the point that I just made to, to the chairman, it's not gonna be compliant. Um, and it may present a false sense of complacency, of compliance, if you will, complacency.
Yeah, Bob, I really appreciate the effort here. My general understanding is that when it comes to ADA, if you're going to make an improvement, it needs to be then full compliance. That's my general understanding. So half measures, as much as they practically can help improve scenarios, I, I think from a more regulatory or even legal standpoint, it's just simply not allowed. Bill Crenshaw, would you, can you help out here?
Um, I, I seem to remember that there is actually a little ramp cut at the end of that concrete walk thing. I mean, it's not, you know, a hundred percent ADA, but it's, you know, what I would hope would be there. So people who are rolling something could, could access it. But I'm pretty sure there is an old ramp there. It's just not shown on this.
Oh, yeah, maybe Sam, Phil and Mike, maybe, can you guys help out here?
Yeah, I could, I could shed some light on it. So if, if the question is if there's a, a ramp transition wherever my mouse is, the, the answer is no. There's a, there's a five to six inch lip or reveal. Um, so I don't know if that exactly was, was that the question, Bill?
All right, I must have been mistaken. I could've sworn there was something.
There, there is one here. There's a lip here that like somebody, um, haunched like an asphalt area and it's like at 14% uh, to create that, we'll call it a transition. It's not a smooth transition, but, um, so yeah, that's, that's, um, I have a picture of, of this angle right here. Uh, there is a reveal.
Maybe for a point of clarity for the board, just so they all keep in mind, the building is bifurcated. Um, there is no access to the western side of the property from that sidewalk. We've attempted to create an accessible route by going a little bit further into the drive aisle closer to the market. But, um, as far as the application in front of you to change a use in a building, that part of the property is not infected by this project or this, uh, application in any way, shape or form. Um, and, and I guess I just ask the board to recognize the efforts that we're making into, you know, there, there's just, there isn't a bottomless pit of money here. So just, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Um, yeah, Bob, I, I'm not sure there's a half measure here that's allowed from my, my, um, from my experience. Although I think half measured, for lack of a better word, but I think that's my understanding.
Mr. Chairman, may, may I steal a screen for one second?
Yeah, go ahead.
So I actually found a photograph. I took, um, I wish I had taken it, um, six inches more to the right, but I didn't. Uh, but it looks like, uh, as Phil, uh, I think Phil stated, there is a, there is a, a reveal here all the way around.
And so on that side, it, it seems like there might, it's like four or five feet wide and the, it's gotta be at least five or six feet long until you get to the door. So there seems to be an area just to be able to put in a gentle slope with an asphalt fill, which isn't like a big ticket item to me. No, it's legal.
Yeah, from, from my perspective, I think you're right. I think it's, it's the, the dollar issue isn't, isn't the issue. I, I don't think you can install that because I think people are gonna perceive that as some type of a ramp. And it's not gonna be compliant. And more importantly, as Phil and I discussed when we first looked at this route, uh, that, that entire section, um, of, uh, of walkway that you're looking at is not compliant. And in order to make it compliant, you would need to reconstruct the whole thing. And the elevation is set. You'd need handrails, indoor level landings, et cetera, to make that work.
And Bob, my, um, yeah, good one.
Yeah, I wasn't suggesting trying to make that whole walkway compliant.
No, no, understood.
I was just trying to, you know, suggest is there, you know, alternative that adds a little bit of non-compliance that actually creates a better outcome because it at least allows people to avoid walking behind the cars part of the way. And that, that to me was like, you know, that's the public safety consideration here. It's like, well, you know, you can't get a new ADA compliant, you know, wheelchair here. Can you do something that's a lot less for short dollars? That has a public safety payoff.
Can I, um, contribute from the COGS perspective here? Cause I really appreciate the sentiment. Um, is that okay, Chris?
Yeah.
Um, so I, I completely hear what you're saying, uh, Mr. Brown. And from the cost perspective, and I think, and I can't speak for the conference, but I think that we're on the same page here. And the, the piece that folks are speaking about, the half measure. So if somebody were to assume that that ramp was accessible and for any reason they had an issue navigating that space and any kind of accident were to occur, our liability insurance would not cover any kind of accident there. And I don't believe that the owner's liability insurance for the property would cover it either. And so I think when it comes to this really difficult balance of like, how do we make space as accessible as possible? How do we make it as safe as possible? I think this I think this is one of those unfortunate circumstances where the desire to make it. Seems safer could actually make it more risky and could actually put us in more liability. So I really appreciate it. And I think that speaking from the COOP's perspective, we. Are trying to work with the coffins as much as possible to make the project accessible, but we do have to be concerned with the liability. Uh, for pedestrian liability. Yeah.
Go ahead Natalie, and then I want to get back to Bob, um, to see if he has, if he has any other thoughts for the project.
I just wanted to make a comment that. I, I think I speak for the board when we say we do. Recognize the efforts that are being made and we are not trying to waste anybody's money. It's a matter of. Older buildings, not older, but you know, um, current built buildings. Come before us every once in a while, and we only have a certain number of chances to make improvements. So we try to seek, seek out creative ways to make things improved. Whenever we can. And that is why we have these long drawn out conversations about these things, because if we don't, then nothing ever gets improved in small. Or larger measures. So, um, if it seems. Like a lot to people, please know that we are cognizant of all of the concerns. We just need to work through these things so that we. Improve things over time when they are not new builds that we have more control over.
Wilson Natalie, Bob, do you have any other thoughts about the project?
No, Chris, thank you.
Annette, is there anything you'd like to share? I think you said you're, that you're good, Annette, you're on mute, but I believe you're okay. Okay, okay. My, my last thought for the applicants is that, um, I, I don't know what type of, um, demand for parking that. You expect, but in general, I don't have any reason to believe that the parking is going to be limited. Therefore. I'm very willing to, as one member of the board. I'm very, very willing to trade. Spaces for the other improvements, for example, the trucking patterns and things like that. I'm not going to make. Uh, make specific recommendations myself about what to do. Um, but I'm, I will, I'm willing to trade parking for some of those other improvements. Some of them have already been implemented. So I appreciate that. I saw what was done in the front. Of the building with the angled parking spaces in there. I've, I've saw what was done near the dumpsters. It looks like there's some trade in parking spaces. I'm continue, I will trade parking spaces for site improvements. And I'm very comfortable with that. Um, but I'm not going to dictate. I don't, as one more board member, I'm not here to, I'm not going to dictate what to do. Um, and I really appreciate what has been presented tonight. Uh, Bill, Mark, I'll give you an opportunities to, to provide some guidance here on how you would. Like to advocate for your client proceeding. What, what would you like to accomplish for the remainder of this meeting?
Quite frankly, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to close the public hearing and move to vote on a special permit and the site plan review. Uh, that has been now before you for these two meetings. I'm prepared to walk through a memo I submitted back at the end of December. Walk through each of the special permit criteria first, and then the site plan criteria. Obviously, if there are questions about my. Late person's technical conclusions, we have Phil and Sam and. Uh, Michael here to answer more detailed questions. If, if I can share screens, I can put that up.
Uh, yes, in one minute. Bill, Nemja, is there anything to, to add to that before we proceed?
No, I think we, I think we've covered, uh, most of that and we have, I have, you know. Our notes that we've taken for potential. Just discussion areas. But I think we're, I think we're good.
Uh, okay, to the board members, um, we've done this in the past where we have the applicant walk us through. The special permit criteria as Mark has suggested. So this, 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 this has worked for me in the past. I'm, I'm happy to. Allow Mark the space to do so. Is any objections?
Uh, Chris, we have a couple of things that we, uh, I think we still have to answer. One was the enclosure and one is the. The trucking situation.
Okay, for the enclosure, my thought would be to, uh. Have it listed as an equal enclosure with, with black slats.
I could go along with that, then, then the only other thing would be the, uh, truck and trailer access.
And so what, what Jim is saying to the applicant that for him to support this project, he, he would like to see improvements to the site plan. That would improve trucking access, as he noted earlier.
That's correct. Thank you.
So that, that's up for the applicant to decide. If they would like to put that forward before we close.
It's really hard. Yeah, I'm sorry, uh, Sam, you know, members of the board. I have tried, everybody has tried to accommodate every one of the planning board's comments throughout this entire process. And you. Advanced Auto Parts is the only other. Uh, company in that plaza that gets the large tractor trailer deliveries. They get one per week. You're talking about a total of three to four deliveries per week. We've already sacrificed. A, a good number of parking spaces. I'd really, really, really prefer not to sacrifice anymore. We have never, ever, ever had a problem with trucks access, excuse me, accessing. The current loading dock. And as Phil has described, accessing the. Market's loading dock is going to be an easier maneuver. So I'm just. Uh, I really don't want to lose any more parking spaces and I hope the board can still support this project.
And I would add to that, that, well, so. From, from our perspective and. And Wayne Amico brought this up, like, I, I feel like I said this each time I've talked about this parking, but in. And part of my point is to Jim is to say that. We're not ignoring the issue that you're raising, but I think we've been trying to come up with. Ways that we can do that without completely taking that parking away. And I believe part of it would be coordination between myself with the co-op. With our operational plan, coordination with the businesses at the end of the plaza to talk about our large truck deliveries. And honestly, to do an operational plan to cone off those spots anytime we know a large truck delivery is coming in. So I understand the concern and I think maybe the middle ground is an operational plan. Where we make sure if we're going to have these large truck deliveries come in, we make sure that those four spots that were discussed. Are, are roped off for that portion of the day. And so for a temporary period of maybe two hours, we'll lose the four spots, but we won't lose them. For all of the open business hours. That would be my recommendation. And if the board be willing to consider that as, um. A way that we can work together on this.
Uh, we can, it, it's up to the applicant to determine if that's how you want to proceed, Sam and, and team. And it's just a matter of you, you've heard the opinions from, from one board member, Jim, about this. And, uh, there's, there's five boarding board members, so it's up to you to decide on how you would like to proceed with that.
Of course, may I say something, please? Sam, I appreciate what you're saying and Mr. Copman, I appreciate what you're saying. I think you're erroneous in what you're, uh, uh, suggesting and I, and I cannot support. Uh, your, uh, project unless this is solved. I want to be very honest with you upfront.
Mr. Chairman, can I just make one comment, just kind of for the board's consideration? I totally understand. Jim's perspective on this. He has a unique perspective that maybe none of us do, right? But if. The, we've all brought this, we've brought the situation up. We've, I'm sorry, we brought this issue up to the board. We brought this issue up to the applicant. They're telling us they're going to come up with an operational plan to make it work. Uh, who, if, if a vehicle can't get in to their store. Who are they hurting? They're hurting themselves, right? So it, it's up to them to figure this out. And I feel that they, if what we've outlined doesn't work, they'll come up with something up. So, excuse me, something else that will work. And if they end up having to come back to this point and say, you know what, we were incorrect, we had to remove four more spaces. And they have to apply for a permit, a special permit to do that or something, then they'll have to do that. But I think if the onus is on, on the applicant to try to make this work for themselves, it appears they have a plan that they're, they're comfortable will work. Um, and you know, from my perspective, and again, Jim, no disrespect, I understand your, your perspective on this entirely. You're trying to look out, out for everybody. And protect them, but it's really, they're only going to hurt themselves if they can't make this work.
Wayne, I, I would say you're a hundred percent right, except for one thing. I do not want to see somebody hurt to prove the point.
That's a fair statement, Jim. Fair statement.
Um, it, Mark, could, could we, could we, uh, put a condition here if that, uh, the trucking doesn't work, that they're going to have, that the applicant will have to. Uh, come back to the board and file the paperwork and address it to Vice Chairman Jim Coleman instead of myself? Would that be? Would that be allowed as a condition that we could add?
Uh, let me think about that. What I would prefer is that. We, well. I, I, I think in the absence of. Peer review testimony. That the proposal that we've made is a non-starter. There's. Uh, you know, my, my reaction as an attorney is that we're, to the extent board testimony, board conditions are hinged on. Expert testimony. I, I, I'm, I'm defenseless. To the extent, and I don't mean any disrespect to the member. That it's one member's opinion, but it doesn't necessarily match the peer review opinion. I, I'm uncomfortable with that. That we, we've paid an engineer, our engineer, uh, is present tonight. He doesn't seem to think it's a problem. We're paying for Wayne as well. He doesn't seem to think it's a problem. And I'm not hearing from anybody else on the board that they seem to think it's a problem. So. I don't, I really, I don't really like bidding against myself in these circumstances. Uh, if it turns out to be a problem and we need to lose parking spaces in order to solve it. We have to come back. That's, that's, you're going to put a condition in the site plan and the special permit decision. That we have to do what it shows on the plan. And if we change the plan in any minor way or a major way, we have to come back and modify the plan. So if it doesn't work, we'll be back to modify the plan. In the meantime, I think comparing it to. Market Basket is, you know, when I was listening to that, I'm, I'm cognizant that, um, you went through a large. Effort out there, but that's seventy thousand square foot grocery store. We're not in the league.
Yeah, thanks, thanks, Mark, for those comments. Um, we're, we're gonna, I, I think we've said enough about this one topic. You've heard. From the opinions of board members on this topic. And the applicant will, can, the applicant team can choose how to proceed. And I trust that you guys will proceed on what you think is best. I'm, I'm going to take, Mark, before I get back to you, we're going to take public comment at this period.
Chris, can I ask one more question before you take comment?
Um, make it quick.
Um, perhaps another option that will work for everybody would be, we did somewhere, we've done with other, um. Other projects where there's a, a check-in period after six months or a year. You know, and, and the board can evaluate if there is a problem. Uh, we could base it on either input from. Uh, assuming that the applicant did, then we could base it on input from the, uh. Police or, or. However, the board wants to proceed, but that may be another option. We've done that with a number of recent projects where we're concerned about traffic coming in. Excessive traffic, uh, particularly in downtown.
Okay, um, that, that's enough. And that would be a condition, Bill, that would be added to the decision.
If, Mr. Mr. Chairman, maybe for perspective, in a situation like this, maybe you'd want to put it like three months out rather than six. Just so that if there is an issue, it can be resolved sooner.
Okay, um, I'm going to take public comment now. So for members of the public that you can either use, there's many ways to participate. You can use the race hand feature calling you. Uh, I'll do that first and then I will open it up for anyone else, particularly those that are on the phone and not on a computer to also participate. Um, so please, uh, raise hands if you would like to make a public comment. If there is anyone, uh, that cannot or does not know how to use the racing features, feel free to speak up as well at this moment. I'll also take your comments if you just speak up. And if you just bear with me, I'm going to check the chat to make sure that we're not receiving any comments in the chat either. The public is also welcome to put comments into the chat.
Hey Chris, while we're waiting, can I just ask one quick thing? I hope, I think it's going to be quick. Um, just because I don't see it called out on this plan, although maybe I'm not just seeing it. Is there a plan for snow storage? I only ask because of. Looking forward, you know, to, to other. You know, to, to any changes in the future. Is there a plan for snow storage?
We didn't create, we didn't, we didn't create a new plan for snow storage. Uh, the snow storage plan is, uh, what it always has been is to, you know. Push it away from the main parking area, wait for wave of the building. And if we get a major snow event that requires trucking, then, then that's what we do.
No, that totally makes sense. I just noticed after the last snowstorm that there was a lot of snow in front of the current applicant. Spot, which obviously will not go, you know, when there's a store there, it won't happening. I was just wondering if. If there was a plan, we often see that on plans. I'm not trying to be overly critical, just something.
Yeah, no, not, not at all, not at all. It's, uh, we're. Totally understood. Appreciate the comment.
Right, Mark, if, if you may, I will allow you to walk us through. Um, the special term criteria and whatever else needs to be covered from the point of view.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, with that, I'll ask to share a screen.
Please go ahead. Bill, can you make sure that Mark has permission if he needs it? Mark, go ahead and try.
Yes.
If you don't mind.
No, can you see that?
Yes, I can.
Should have a yellow highlight. So this is a memo that I delivered. To the board back before the end of the last year and it walks you through the various criteria that are in the bylaw. With regard to parking reductions, section six, one, four allows for a special permit for parking relief. There are a couple of criteria. Uh, that are set forth. Really, there's only one, uh, I believe that's applicable here. We may have demonstrated to the satisfaction of the board that there's no possible way to provide the required parking because as. Wayne has said on a number of occasions, this is an existing lot, but certainly. Uh, the lack of compliance will not adversely affect either the use proposed or the parking situation downtown. So we think we have tripped and, and, or, or hit the mark on that threshold issue. Once this goes over into the general field of, of special permit decision making. Under section ten point four point two. Uh, we go into the bylaws generic criteria, social economic community needs which are served by the proposal. Uh, this co-op, uh, is, let's just say is well-loved on the launching pad. And we don't think we need to say much more about the community needs that are served by the proposal. Uh, we think we've made our case with regard to traffic flow and safety, including parking and loading. I know that there's some issues with regard to. Deliveries at this point in time, but we think operationally those will work themselves out as we go forward. Uh, the, the actual trip generation. Uh, by the proposed co-op is minor in peak hour and minor on a daily basis. So, uh, we think this is a good reuse of an existing site on a major road. Uh, utilities, uh, and the adequacy of utilities and public services. Uh, there's been no comment with regard to any of the utilities and lack of capacity. Neighborhood character. And social structures. Uh, this will occupy an existing building. We're improving the building by making amenity space on top of it that will provide. A scenic view of the river and a place where people can relax after shopping at the store and perhaps having a beverage. When they're, uh, meeting up with friends. Uh, the conservation commission has signed off on this. And, uh, that speaks volumes as well. And then lastly, potential fiscal impact, including impact on town services. Well, there will be some jobs here. As I said, it's reuse of an existing space. Um, certainly it's going to have a positive net impact on the community, uh, and its economy. Under site plan approval, ten point five point seven has a number of criteria and I'll just walk through those quickly. Protection of adjoining premises and the general neighborhood from detrimental use. Again, this is exist, this is reuse of an existing commercial space. Uh, the deck we think is a benefit to the neighborhood, uh, that will, um, have a, a positive effect on the general neighborhood.
Um, Mark, can I interrupt you really quick?
Yep.
The, the first set of criteria that you went through, that was for the special permit criteria. And this second set of criteria that you are now discussing is about site plan. Is that correct?
That is correct. Ten point five point, ten point five point seven is the criteria for site plan.
I just wanted to make sure that all board members could follow along to, to note the different, different sections that we're talking about. And that they would, they both require separate votes. So there will be a vote for special permit that Mark has just discussed. And then what he's. And then what he's discussing now will be a vote um, regarding site plan and the modifications to the site plan. Did I get that correct, Mark? That's.
Yes. Would you like me to stop with the special permit or would you like me to just throw it all on the table?
Uh, I just wanted to make sure that, um, we're all aware about, uh, what criteria goes to what vote. So um, I'm, I'm, I'm very happy for you to continue, Mark, but just again, just want to bring awareness.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The first six were site, were special permit. The next, uh, beginning with the, the number one that we just covered uh, and concluding with the end of this list will be site plan review. And remember the difference between the two is site plan review is generally not deniable. Special permit is discretionary permit. The second site plan review criterion is convenience, convenience and safety of vehicular and pedestrian movement. We've had lengthy discussions about the movement of pedestrians and vehicles. And we think that that's adequately been covered. Again, the volumes trip generation are not large. Um, and the peak hours are not large in terms of their impact on the very smooth traffic pattern on Route sixty-two in front of the site. Uh, with regard to number three, these speak to utility questions, methods for sewage disposal, refuse and other wastes. Not to cause downstream flooding from the hundred year storm. Uh, so these wetlands questions as well as stormwater management and utility adequacy, I think have all been answered in the positive. Certainly we've heard nothing about water or sewer capacity. The stormwater system's been reviewed and the Conservation Commission has signed off. Uh, underground drainage conveyancing systems against stormwater management. So, uh, we've, we've covered that in the, in number three, there's a bit of redundancy. Off-street loading and unloading of vehicles is number five incidental to servicing of the building. Uh, this has to do primarily with parking and delivery of operations on the site. We think that the, notwithstanding the debate that we just recently had five, 10 minutes ago. The proposal is adequate and if it's not, there will be some operational changes without losing parking spaces. If parking spaces are to be lost, we would come back because that, that would be required. Adequacy of other municipal facilities, um, this speaks to issues that we've addressed as well. Um, residents housed on the site, I take that to mean the commercial tenant, uh, rather than any kind of residential request. Um, there were waivers that we submitted as well, Mr. Chairman, um, and we did that previously. At, um, the last meeting. So here is the waiver list that we submitted. I think all of these have been discussed. Uh, the structure, uh, in regard to the conformance with the zoning bylaw, uh, we don't meet the setback. Uh, but we do, uh, we did receive relief for that from the zoning board of appeals. Um, we have requested a special permit to reduce the total count parking spaces to a hundred and two. With the letter I submitted today, that should now be one hundred. Um, no parking space shall be located within twenty feet or ten feet. These are existing non-conformities. And I, all of these, uh, uh, references to the waivers were cited in Mr. Amico's, uh, letter. Both his initial review letter and the letter that was submitted on February seventeenth, twenty twenty-two. Uh, again, twenty-five feet for curb radii, existing non-conformity landscaping area of the site. Uh, these are existing non-conformities. Planning board rules and regulations. Now, these are for the site plan. Uh, there were a series of things that we discussed at the last meeting. Uh, waiving the owners of record on all adjacent parcels, current, the current zoning designation, which is shown. Um, adjacent zoning districts within two hundred feet. A proposed use and location of buildings with regard to structure height. Existing non-conformities covered by the memo already. Location of existing storm drainage structures, uh, all of these were negotiated between Phil and Wayne as we went through the preparation of the site plans and peer review was commenced. Location of farm and fire alarm and terminal boxes. All proposed water lines, again, an existing site. Location of all existing drainage facilities within five hundred feet of the boundary. Underground utilities and electric and telephone on the existing site. Um, at the project's proposed water and sewer usage and design reviewed by DPW's consulting engineer. It's an existing site and stormwater drainage system, uh, conforms to design based on fifty-year storm. This is an existing site in that regard as well. And then lastly, uh, we sought a waiver from consistency with the planning board's landscape regulations because uh, getting a little redundant here, it's an existing site. Those are the waivers and, uh, the special permit. Um, deviations that we've requested with regard to the applicant. There's no surprises here. Uh, the only additional amendment to this would be a hundred and a hundred total spaces instead of a hundred and two, but we did that largely because the board, uh, had spoken favorably of that request in order to open up a little space for ADA parking and dumpster. Maneuvering. So with that, um, I will reiterate my request to ask the board if, if you're so inclined to close the public hearing and, uh, deliberate on whether or not the special permanent site plan review might be granted this evening.
Thanks, Mark. Uh, and, and I I can infer the answer to my next question already, but I'll ask it anyways, uh, to Mark and to Sam and to the rest of the team. Is there any additional information that you would like to present before I make a motion to close this hearing?
I don't think we have anything else. Thank you for asking.
Okay. Yeah, I, and I, I'm pretty sure the answer is no, but just asking a question just to make sure. Um, so I will make a motion to close unless the, the board, unless there's board members that would like to speak up before I do. I will give one more opportunity to board members. I'll make a motion to close the hearing.
Second. I'll second that.
Thanks, Jim. Um, so Bill, motion made by me, seconded by Jim. We'll take roll call vote. Jim Coleman.
Uh, you close the hearing?
Is that a yes, Jim?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Natalie Robert?
Yeah.
Bob Brown?
Yes.
Um, Bill Crenshaw?
Yes.
And I am a yes. So thank you to the applicant and, and all the effort you've put into um, to, to this meeting and the previous one. Really, we really appreciate all the efforts on this.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We thank the board as well and your peer reviewer for, uh, a fine effort, uh, moving it along to this stage.
Thank you, everybody. Uh, the, the hearing is now closed. And so now, the board members, it's, it's our duty to review uh, the, the action plan that the staff report presented and I'm going to share my screen so that we can review that again. So our actions required are to first vote to see if the special permit criteria has been met. And that's item one. Second item would be to vote, just about to modify the existing special permit to allow the proposed improvements as presented in the applicant's site plan. That's essentially voting for the site plan. But I know, did I get that right, Bill? I'm trying, Bill, what's the difference between two and four? Can you, Bill Nemser?
And, uh, number two is we have a special permit that, um, there's a number of special permits, but uh, that allows the changes requested and in this case a use, um, to the site plan. Um, they've the applicant has already received, uh, necessary, uh, uh, changes from the zoning board to allow the planning board's changes. Uh, in this too, because there was, if you recall, there was a non-conformity and so on. Um, and the, uh, second, um, or the, uh, number four is, uh, to, uh, modify the existing site plan, uh, the, like, the site plan of record that would allow the proposed improvements as either the, the applicant, uh, presented or as amended with specific things. So you're voting. I mean, Mark, Mark may, uh, have, have a different way that, that is, that is, uh, doesn't require two votes, but my, my experience, uh, it's been, uh, a special permit you're modifying and then we're, uh, uh, modifying the site plan. And so that's the basic. The site plan is, um, allowed to change because the special permit allows it.
Okay, we'll, we'll go through this list one by one. Um, so in Bill, uh, it's, it's important to make a motion and then to discuss each one. Is that correct? Okay, so I'll make a motion to find that the proposed changes are consistent with the special permit criteria as listed in section three of the staff report and as listed in section two, section ten point four of the zoning bylaws, which is the same reference. And do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, thanks, Phil. So it's up to us to decide if this applicant has met the special permit criteria, which is listed right here. You have, we heard, uh, Mr. Borowski's what he, what he presented at the end of the hearing. That covered, that I believe covered these items. Any, any, any thoughts about this in general to the board members?
In general, I'm good with it.
Looks good.
Okay, um, I'm willing to take a vote unless I hear otherwise.
So Chris, before you proceed with the vote?
Yes.
Um, is it appropriate at this point to make a motion to add a condition that will provide for the check-in on the trucking? Say.
Bill Nemser, once the appropriate time to add in conditions?
My suggestion would be at the special permit vote. Um, this is just finding that they're, that it's not even necessarily finding they're consistent. It's, it's acknowledging that the board has considered these conditions, uh, and that they have had a finding that the um, benefits outweigh the detriments of it. So at this point, it would not be appropriate. Next vote would be.
So it's not, the conditions are not for the special permit criteria. It's for the site plan is what you're saying, Bill?
Yeah, well, the special permits would, would be, uh, uh, part of this, of the, I mean, the, uh, conditions would be part of the special permit.
But part of the special permit, which is this vote, what we just made a motion on.
Yeah, this is finding that these have all been, as you can look, that shall include consideration of the following. So you, you're saying that you looked at all of these components and considered them when making.
Oh, I see. I see. Number two is to modify the existing special permit and that's when we add a condition.
Right. So you're acknowledging that the board has, has considered these.
So the answer to your question, Bob, is no, this is not, this is not the, the, the vote to add a motion for a condition. Okay. All right, I'm gonna take a roll call vote on this. Bob Brown?
Yes.
Jim Coleman?
No.
Natalie Robert?
Yeah.
Bill Crenshaw?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. So Bill Nemser, that's four, one. Um, the Jim Coleman was a no, remaining board members were a yes, and that was for the motion I made regarding the special, to find special permit, that the changes are consistent with the special permit. The second action we're, we're looking to take is the vote to modify the existing special permit to allow the proposed improvements as presented in the applicant's site plan. And my understanding, Bob, this would be the time to make a motion that adds the condition uh, that you may have been referencing. So if, if you would like to give that in the temp, I'll, you may, may go ahead.
Also, if I can, before Bob gets going on it, uh, this is where I would also, uh, approve, uh, I specifically approve the decrease in parking from a hundred and two to one hundred spaces.
And Phil, should we do that two separate motions in once?
It's up to you. I mean, I, I would say that the, the modification as the, the improvements as presented tonight. Um, but I would call that out specifically since that was a, um, a change that was not originally anticipated.
Chris, can I ask a question? Probably Bill. Is it allowable if, say, for example, whether, rather than approving a reduction of parking to a hundred spaces, we approved a reduction of ninety-five, even though it wasn't formally requested? Mostly because I don't really want them to come back if they end up with ninety-nine instead of a hundred.
Yes, the board could in this case, and the reason is that we originally advertised this as, uh, there was going to, uh, as a petition to reduce parking spaces as, as I think was determined by the planning board. So the answer is yes.
General Bill, I would support that too. I don't have, have any need for an applicant to come back to talk about one parking space. I'll, I'll allow them to determine what's best for their plan within the general range that we have.
And Chris, what would be those places that you're dropping it down to ninety-five?
Um, whatever the applicant would consider appropriate. At least I can speak only for myself, Jim, but whatever the applicant would consider appropriate um, for their, for their operation of the site. It just means that we're only going to, it's, let's say the number is ninety-five as Bill put out. It only mean, it means that world, that the, that the special permit would then only require a minimum of ninety-five parking spaces. They can add more, but it'd be a minimum of ninety-five. So that's, they can do what they want as long as they have ninety-five parking spaces.
They could not move or relocate the handicap parking spaces without the board's approval, right?
That, that's correct. Yeah, to move the handicap parking spaces would require change in site plan, would be my understanding. So this cannot remove or modify park, handicap parking spaces. This can only, this is only about the total number of parking spaces, not the total number or location of handicap parking spaces.
Uh, we could specify that in the condition, uh, just to reemphasize. Reemphasize, just emphasize that it, you know, no handicap parking spaces shall be relocated.
And so this is the fun part, guys. Someone can make a motion with a specific number they have in mind.
I'm waiting on Bob.
Okay, um, so I would like to move that we include a condition that requires a check back on how the trucking situation is working. And I'd actually like the first check back to be within sixty days of opening. And then again, in six months, and again, in one year. And my, my reasoning for that is if there are problems at the beginning, I think we want to know early. Then as their operations expand and they get rolling, I think we want to see how that's working as well. I'd also like to move that we allow the we include a condition that allows, provides for a minimum of ninety-five parking spaces. Provided, however, that all of the parking spaces that are show on the site plan as handicap parking spaces are maintained. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Uh, for clarification, um, Bob, um, may I ask a question, Mr. Chair? Sorry. Good. Um, regarding, uh, the, um, the check-in, would that be something where we request, uh, the, um, the, uh, police, uh, provide, uh, their input on any problems that have been noted there? Or would it be, we're just up to the, um, the applicant and, um, the applicant and the board?
It would be, I was contemplating that it would be up to the applicant, but do we ordinarily also ask the police as an ordinary course? Does that something you need as a condition?
No, I I I would, I just think it adds some clarity. I everything I everything we do goes through the police that I send out. Just as just as just a question, I'm sorry.
Bob, is your intent to have the check in be to the planning board or to staff in town?
I think my intent was to have it be to the planning board. Because a planning board member has expressed, a planning board member who happens to have experience of being a trucker has expressed his concerns. And while I know the modeling and peer review, I'll show that the delivery situation appears to be appropriate. To me, somebody's actual experience doing that kind of work is important. And and I also note that, you know, I think it's a very tricky delivery situation because of the placement of where the pole is in the parking lot.
Bill, Bill, Bill Nemser, this is is sixty days. I know we've done this in the past with other types of applicants, it's sixty days enough time to you know, have have experience with with something and then issue issue the public hearing notices and go through the proper cadence.
I think it is. I think that the the burden comes with the idea of a public hearing. If we if we made a condition, it's coming with just at a regularly posted meeting. We don't need to go through the mailings and we don't need to post, you know, sixty days in America. You know, we don't need to go through the the whole public hearing process. But my suggestion would be if we make it a condition, what we've done in the past also when we have check ins is say at a regularly posted planning board hearing. That way it doesn't impose an undue burden on the applicant to you know, have a whole public hearing each time. That's something I would recommend trying to avoid. And I I think we could do accomplish everything simply with a check in at a regular meeting.
Bill, would you expect that somebody would come back and are we going to say after sixty days revisit this issue?
I I I'm sorry, Jim, I didn't understand it.
I I, well, let's say we approve this this evening. Are we going to say that we want to revisit with the applicant and sixty days?
Right, well, what happens? We found this out with a couple of the places in downtown, we'll say approximately sixty days because sometimes the days don't fall right for regularly posted meeting. We would send a follow up, like we have a, we've instituted a reminder system in O M S where it is automatically generated, hey, you know, you guys show up at this meeting, it may be fifty eight days, it may be sixty two days, but the the idea is that it's at a regularly posted meeting, they're reminded. And that was why I wanted the clarification on what input would be most appropriate, but yeah, I I don't think that would be any problem on staff's end anyway, Jim.
Okay, well, that makes sense. If we do that, something like that, and I think Bob has a a good solution for going forth and seeing what's happening. So I would support that, Bob. Thank you.
Bob, for clarity, do you mind if I make the motion with additional clarity? So that it's comprehensive, but that you wouldn't be offended, Bob, would you, if I do that? Okay, all right. I'll make a motion to modify the existing special permit to allow the proposed improvements as presented in the applicant's site plan during this hearing with the following conditions. Condition one, that the permit changes the minimum required parking spaces to be ninety five. And this condition includes that the that that does, it includes, this condition includes that the applicant is not allowed to modify, remove or reduce the number of handicap parking spaces. This only applies, this condition only applies to the total number of parking spaces to be ninety five at a minimum. And the second condition would be that the applicant comes into a regularly scheduled planning board hearing approximately sixty days after and approximately a hundred and twenty days after for planning board review.
Chris, do you want to make that a meeting rather than a hearing?
Did I say hearing?
Yes, you did.
A regularly scheduled hearing. I apologize. Go back, cross out the record. The 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 motion was to have the applicant come in for a regularly scheduled meeting.
Excuse you, Chairman. Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry. Did you say a hundred and twenty days or a hundred and eighty days? That's a hundred and eighty days is six months, a hundred and twenty days is only four months.
I said a hundred and twenty days, and the the this this part portion of the of the hearing is, the hearing is closed, so this portion
Sorry.
is not available for further comment. It's okay, I know that the these are the rules and I know you don't, I'm familiar with them, so it's quite okay. The motion is for a hundred and twenty days. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Bill Crenshaw's thinking about it, so I'll give him a minute.
I'm good.
Okay. We'll stop sharing. I'll take a roll call vote. Jim Coleman?
Yes.
Bill Crenshaw?
Yes.
Bob Brown?
Yes.
Natalie Robert?
Yeah.
And I'm also a yes. All right, so I'm gonna share my screen again, so we can see what number three is. Number three is to vote to grant, I believe it's waivers for design review, or is it just a waiver, Bill? Can you can you expand on number three for us?
The well, actually, I would reword this now, but there is a waiver requested for design review because this was an existing project and not building a new one. That that's a requirement of site plan approval. Um, but I I would say also the the waivers is requested in the applicant's list of waivers that Attorney Vravsky just went through. So I would say waivers as requested and we can list them all in the in the decision itself to make sure we've captured everything. And we could put them up on the screen if you'd like to run through them as well now.
That's what I'm, that's what I'm doing right now. Okay, make make sure that we have them all. Can you see what I'm, can you see what I'm doing? See if I have. All right, it's not under tonight's meeting. Yeah, okay. So a as we saw, Mr. Bobowski presented this earlier. Here is the the full list of waivers that were presented. It's there's conformance, there's items about conformance with the zoning bylaws. I'm not gonna go, I'm not, I'm if someone wants to hash through this, I'm happy to do so. I I I I assume that everyone is able to read these ahead of time and follow along. So then the the motion will be to approve. We'll go back to it. The vote, there would be a vote, a motion to grant the waivers for this application.
The waivers as requested in the applicant's letter dated whatever, and you know, I'll put that.
Yep, and thi- this does not include a waiver for designer.
No, it does not, and and it's probably because that was in my original proposal, so I would, I would say just add that as a waiver in addition.
I'll make a motion and then we can discuss further. I'll I'll make a motion to approve this application with and grant a waiver for the just, I'm sorry, I'll start again. I'll make a motion to grant a waiver for the design review. And the and the list of waivers that were presented by Mr. Bobowski tonight with the letter shown, and that is dated. I don't have a date on it, Bill.
Okay, well, it will be received.
I don't know the rules if Mark's allowed to comment on at this time since we closed the hearing, but if there's a date that.
He can respond. He can respond to questions, anybody can respond to questions.
Mark, can you help us out just to get maybe a date or something that's a little more firm here?
As soon as I grab my power cord, I'll look at the file on my computer and and get right back to you, but I have to run to get the cord.
Okay, so.
I'll be, I'll be right back.
The motion includes a a date pending on on the letter.
I'll second that, Chris.
Thanks, Jim. And we'll we'll get that date sorted. Any any thoughts on the waiver list, folks?
Looks good.
I'm not gonna take a vote until we have a date, maybe Bill, Bill's, I'm sure trying to find the date for this is too.
Uh, well, I have a date when it was received, but and I mean, you could connect it, but it's probably easiest if I just modified it myself. If Mark did, it just put it, we should upload it, it was that one.
Is it good enough to?
Received date, no?
What's that?
Couldn't we just use the received date? No?
Yeah.
I mean.
Yeah.
I'm fine with using the date that you received.
Okay, well. Okay, then I will tell you when it was. I will give you.
I've I've gotten my power cord and I don't have.
One moment here, I get it.
We're gonna try and use the received date, Mark, so.
Yes, I am looking at my email right now to Bill. It was one twenty four twenty two.
One twenty four twenty two.
Email, very short email. Bill, please share with the planning board for tomorrow's hearing.
Okay.
So that was a month ago, that, well, almost a month ago. That's the same waiver list?
It is.
Okay, so there wasn't a revised one. There's only one waiver list. It was originated on that date.
This this was the, this was the compilation of the revisions and the waiver that we asked for this evening is moot because we asked for a hundred and you've gone to ninety five, so we don't need to worry about that.
Understood. Okay, so the motion is to to grant a waiver for a design review and the way in the in the in the additional waivers listed on the letter provided by Mark Bobowski on January twenty fourth, that was also presented during tonight's meeting as well. Can I, Jim, can I get a second on that one?
Second, please. Yes.
Thanks. Thanks, Jim. All in favor? Jim Coleman?
Yes.
Bob Brown?
Yes.
Natalie Robert?
Yeah.
Bill Crenshaw?
Yes.
I'm a yes as well. Bill, that's five zero for waivers. The final action required so that everyone can see it is to vote to modify the existing site plan to allow the proposed improvements as presented in the applicant's site plan. So I will make a motion to approve the site plan as modified and proposed tonight with the improvements as presented by the applicant during this hearing.
I will second that.
Um, can I have a clarification, board?
Yes, Jim. I'm sorry, yes, Bill.
Um, okay, I would request that you you specify with the fence eight foot with and the purposes to prevent the debris and water, but I think I think that was clear that preventing the debris and water was the key on that, so I would request that the board decide how they want to.
All right, I'll I'll do the motion again. I I made, I'll make a motion to approve the modified existing. I'll make a motion to approve the modifications made to the site plan with the impro- proposed improvements as presented by the applicant during this hearing. And this includes the dumpster fence to be a minimum of eight feet high with black slats and black chain link fence with the intent of with the intent of mitigating any type of debris or runoff that would impact the river or the surrounding environment.
I'll second that.
Thanks, Jim.
Can I propose one thing that might help, Mr. Chair?
Go ahead.
Consider, um, it's possible that if there was a modification would would the board be agreeable to if there was a modification by the town engineer, if there was a a minor change and it still maintained the intent to mitigate debris? I don't know if that's something Wayne would be comfortable with or not, but just trying to think, would that be?
I'm fine with that if that's the board or board's choosing, Bill.
Okay, so just an option there, so to avoid a return trip.
The applicant, the applicant said that they're fine with eight, I'm fine with eight. That's my motion. I I'm not gonna hem and haw, I don't want to hem and haw with this anymore. But I agree, we could be, there could be a practical consideration that the applicants wel- welcome to come back later on if they want to modify that based on experience. But that's my motion.
And I continue to second it.
So board members, you're welcome to file a separate emotion. I'm willing to entertain a different interpretation or motion. Natalie, I know I cut you off, you're welcome to also put in the motion and if you think there's a better way to proceed.
Let's go with eight.
All right, I'll take roll call on this one. Unless there's discussion, and remember, this is about approving the site plan. All right, I'll take a, I'll take roll call. Bob Brown?
Yes.
Bill Crenshaw?
Yes.
Natalie Robert?
Yeah.
Jim Coleman?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. That's five zero, Bill, for the approval of the site plan with with the condition that I discussed with the fencing. Bill Nemser, is there anything else? Mark, I'll I'll allow you some time too. Is there anything else that you know, I'd like to be holistic here since we're really tying a bow on this.
No, I I think the resolution this evening was absolutely fine for the applicant. We thank you very much for your attention throughout and your hard work. And I can't wait to see you shopping at the Estebet Coa.
Thank you, everybody.
Thanks. Thanks to the applicant and all that participated. The hearing is closed, all the actions have been completed. There is no further pending actions for this planning board at this time.
Thank you again.
Thanks.
So much. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Michael. Thanks, Sam. Hope to see you guys.
Thank you. Absolutely. Bye.
Okay.
Um, we're gonna take a, it is now nine twenty three, we're gonna take a three minute recess. Okay. You want to make a five, we'll make a five. Anyone? We'll make it five, five minute recess. I have nine, I have nine twenty four, I'll be back at nine twenty nine. Um, Bill, can you give us a little bit of background and then introduce us to the applicant?
Yes, um, the the, well, uh, uh, the applicant is Thomas Whiting, who's. Yep, you can see him there, uh, from Whiting Automotive, a longtime business owner in town. Um, the, this is an interesting, um. Petition for us because uh, uh, the idea of a live work unit, we've discussed for. Uh, quite a while, and we made some modifications recently to the zoning bylaws to address it. Um, but the the intent, uh, if you, I don't know if anybody had a chance to look at staff report, but we're. Yeah, um, the idea is to. Uh, uh, it's another way to activate downtown, um, and Paramount to the, um. The. I think what the board's intent was in the zoning bylaws was to ensure that there is. A commercial facade. Uh, facing underground for the street. Uh, and then having the work unit, uh, either in the back or on top or however it's set up. Um, the other interesting component as working, um. Uh, with, um, the applicant on on, uh, this and also with the building commissioner. I'm looking at what the demand was for these exactly. Um, and I I think I did send the link out a little while ago, but, um, I. Looked on the Massachusetts Cultural Council, who who is oversees towns, cultural council. Um, and uh, on some of their, um, recommended practices and and this sort of, um. Idea for live work. Um, and right now they're, um. They're 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 becoming more and more common where there's a cultural district. Uh, there's actually a classified. Um, on Massachusetts Cultural Council, there are classified ads. Advertising where live work units are being constructed because there is a demand for them throughout. So that's basically where we are here. Uh, the reason the app is before you of her special permit on this is because. It it is in a central business district, uh, was if it was in a regular business district, there would not be a special permit requirement. Um, the applicant has a specific. Um, circumstances with the building, which I'll I'll let him explain. Um, and we've tried to work, uh. As best we could to prepare, um, the applicant for tonight and make sure that, um, he's reading the objectives. Um, of our, um. Live work in downtown overlay district. So, um, if that's okay, Mr. Chair, I'll just turn it over to Tom.
Yeah, please go ahead.
And there you go.
Okay, thank you, Bill, and thank you, uh, Mr. Chairman. So my name is Tom Whiting. Um, I have, uh, had a business in Maynard since nineteen ninety seven. Um, I ran Whiting, um, auto body for a period of twenty some odd years, twenty, just just over twenty years. And in the process, I bought that building on River Street and the building on Main Street that we're talking about now. Um, I have since sold my business. Um, as you get older, the the trades are a little tough on your body, so. I have left it to a younger guy and he still is, uh, is running the business successfully. So. That being said, I still own the property on Main Street and, uh. We've seen ebbs and flows in traffic. Uh, use of space. Uh, my building has Thai chili in it. I don't know if anyone is familiar with that restaurant. But that's been there for over, I think I want to say over twenty five. Years, maybe longer, maybe thirty. Um, and there was a hair salon in the in the parcel piece that I'm talking about at number forty two. Now. When she, uh, obviously COVID has put such a a damper on things as far as business goes and, you know, walk-ins and whatnot, including restaurants and. What was in this space at number forty two was a hair salon that had been there for over thirty five years. So, um, there's the building right there that Bill just put up. So my idea, um, and actually the need, because I have been advertising this space. Since she told me last, uh, she moved out in October this year. Um. October, I'm sorry, in twenty twenty. And I had been advertising it since, I want to say. April, May, June, probably since June, uh, to get someone in there, and I've had no takers. So I've, um. Uh, kinda, I I've kinda researched different ways of of creating, uh, what is needed now, I think, as far as, uh, live work dwelling. Where someone could, you know, do their work in their household and have a storefront property. Where the front of the building hasn't changed and the location, uh, of where the commercial space would be has not changed. Uh, but we added, because the the property or the space is so big that there's a full bathroom, we added, um, you know. This space in the back for for living, um, arrangements. Uh, there's two egresses in the in the property, and I believe. That this will, uh, definitely get me a renter, as you know. Having property, paying taxes and, you know, relying that on, uh, you know, as an income, uh, has. You know, it's it's put a burden on me that I don't have this income, so I I. I really do need to think outside the box, uh, to try to rent this space. There are five units, um, in. In the building. I have three apartments upstairs that rent. As soon as I put them on the market, they rent. Um, I've I've, um, kept up with the building. As you can see, it looks, uh, decent from a curb, um. View, and I've put lighting, uh, to light up the, um. The building in the front, um. I believe that. It would be viable in this situation, and that's my ask.
Thanks, Tom. Um, can, just just for clarity of record.
Sure.
Your, um. What the what the request is, is to have a live work arrangement specifically on the first floor where. The front of the building is commercial and the back of the building is residential. Did I get that correct?
Yes, that is correct. So depending on the space that whoever rents it needs and what they're doing, uh, for work, um. You know, we can figure out the exact footage that they need, you know, square feet. Uh, but the way it's arranged right now, um. The front of the building and the the egress coming into the front where the street side is. Uh, can be completely cordoned off from, uh, the living arrangement.
Um, Bill Nemser, can you help me frame this out a little bit? So if we were. There's going to be items that I assume the, say, the building commissioner may be involved in or code. Um, is involved in, what, what is the planning board looking to review and approve? Is it simply? The ability to designate this as mixed use on the first floor? Is it to, what what is, what is the?
No, it is that it is not mixed use. It is to designate it a live work unit, which is its own.
Okay.
Live work dwelling, that's its own category. Um. Ideally, um. I mean, these also sometimes, you know, we're 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 thinking in this case, something that would be compatible with the the. Uh, uh, cultural district, but the the the. The essence of. This sort of use is to. Stimulate, you know, more activity downtown from both adding residents in there and having, um, a viable business. Um, so. You don't want, I mean, as I understood it from, you know, the zoning bylaws, you don't want to come walking by and look at some guy sitting at his couch watching TV. You want to look by and see, uh, you know, a business that's going, or if it's, you know, it looks like a business. But it's, um, another way to, um, address, um. A need that we have in the community and something that hopefully would. I it would be a kind of a good model, I would hope. Um, like I said, if it was in the business district. You know, uh, rather than, you know, here it wouldn't be, um. A, um. The 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 special permit. Um, so in this case, uh, that's that's why the applicant's here. Uh, one other thing I don't notice, if you notice, but my biggest concern was parking. Um. After the appearance of it, parking, and I, could you speak a little bit to the dedicated parking, Tom?
Yeah, sure. So the building, I have, uh, eight separate parking spots in the back of the building. Um, those are split amongst Thai chili, this unit and the three apartments above. So each apartment has one designated, uh, parking spot. And, uh, usually the businesses, each each business, each business has one designated parking spot. With one extra, so we'll have three extra parking spots if they needed it. If someone came to visit, say, uh, one of the apartments, um, or they had a worker and one of the, one of the, um. Businesses, there's there's parking for that. So I've owned this building since two thousand and twelve, and we have had no problem with parking. Aside from people parking in that lot that they're not supposed to. You know what I mean? So upfront, obviously, there's fifteen minute parking out front. None of my tenants use any of the parking around. Uh, Maynard other than what is, um. Uh, designated for them in the building. So that speaks to the parking, I believe.
Bill, do we have something that shows that?
I think so. Um, I gotta give me a minute while I get the picture. I think we have a picture.
I don't believe I have a picture of the parking area.
No? Well, if you, if you want to ask another question meantime, I'll look through the pictures.
Uh, and Bill, can you expand on what you're thinking? Are you, are you, are you thinking, Bill Crenshaw, that? This type of, um, application, if to to approve it would require of some type of plan that shows parking?
Well, live work residential has a parking requirement. It's just checking the box.
Yeah, so we have two, we'd have two spots for that unit. I I reserve two spots for my businesses, so. Um. That would have two spots.
Yeah, I've just never noticed it, so I'm just. Curious. Show an aerial and then I'll be happy.
Oh, yes, yeah.
So I mean, if you, if you've been down River Street, I don't know if you have lately or not, but. Where my body shop was, my building, uh, that that parking basically lots the other parking of the building. So it's like, it's one, a big area of parking, but my designated away from the body shop is, um, eight spots.
Uh, Mr. Whiting, uh, since, uh, I received the, uh, notification of this from Mr. Nemser, I've driven by that. Space, uh, oh, probably five or six times, including this afternoon. It's never, never, never full.
That's correct. Thank you. Um, and it's also public parking. Uh, I tell my residents, if. If they do need, um, additional parking, there's the resident, well, not resident, but the public parking right around the corner. On River Street. Newly acquired metered public parking.
Um, Bill, here's what I'm struggling with, you know, for a lot of the app applicants that come through for the downtown overlay district. For discussions about parking and, you know, site plans, usually there there's some type of plan that gets referenced, at least in the decision. Do you do envision for, and we're we're not super familiar with with how to proceed. You don't have a lot of experience proceeding with this live work arrangement.
No.
You can envision. Um, having a a plan that just shows some of these, you know, basic site features.
Well, it would depend on the plan, uh, something I guess where it's it's a, it's a existing structure being outfitted. I mean, if it. My suggestion would be, uh, at a condition, the applicant shall ensure. Uh, that there are two, uh, units dedicated to the live work unit in perpetuity. Um, and any change would require, you know, you have to get an amendment for it. Um, it's an existing building. I I I didn't see any. Value really to to or, you know, to have a a site plan or anything other than a basic. Diagram to understanding really what was in the building and, um, what would be visible as well as the front with the lighting, which was. One of the things we discussed was, you know, ensuring. That the lighting was was adequate with our. To help with our, you know, our illumination that we're trying to do and and Mr. Whiting, uh, gives some pictures of that. Does it, but no, I, and the answer is no, Chris, not at this scale, I don't. If it was a new building or if it was going to be a new. If it was a new building or if it was going to be a new project, we're gonna have a half dozen. Sure. Not for a second.
All right, if I if I can speak to that, Bill, uh if you don't mind, um I do have, the parking lot is lined and it also is marked uh designated to specific apartments, specific um numbers of the building. So people know where to park. Does that help?
Sure.
I'm just, I'm, you know, I'm just trying to, yes, it does help, Tom, and uh I I this isn't a matter of, you know, I I trust that uh you have a handle on all this. It's a matter of just what's required for the record for for the decision.
Sure.
Um so that, you know, down the road, it's easy to see how and why the decision was made and what was sort of the backup behind it. You know, it's really easy for us to say, yeah, two two parking, three parking spaces. If it's shown on the plan, it's just a simple thing to refer back to, I, you know, but I also, I'm not trying to make busy work for you, muted Tom, so I'm just trying to understand where the where the where the rails are. If we're, you know, this is a bowling alley and we're the bumpers. You know, this is a roadway where, you know, I just want to make sure what what trying to understand what the lane is. I'm gonna share my screen. Because the staff, Bill, the staff report that was put together had actions for us. One was to look at the special permit criteria that we just did for the previous applicant, something that we just did. The second was to determine that this request meets the criteria for the downtown overlay district special permit. And the third is a decision on approval of a special permit that will allow for a live work dwelling. Would it be helpful if we just went through the special permit criteria and discuss it? Maybe that might help jog us, jog some memory in terms of what's important here? Yeah?
Yeah, which I might pull it up.
No, I got it. I got it. I got it right here.
Can you share? Oh, you, all right. Okay, you got it. All right.
Yeah, so for for item one, did I get that right, Bill? So ten point two four. Bill, Bill, what's the difference between two and one here for action items?
Um.
Oh, I got it. Ten point four and then the the other ones for DOD.
Right. Yeah, exactly. Exactly.
Okay, so for the first part, does what what the applicant proposes, does it meet, or at least does it consider these following criteria? Does it serve a social economic community need? Um you know, I have my opinion on that and I think Tom is already conveying that it does. Um there's not much to talk about with traffic flow and safety in in terms of what our scope is. Obviously, there are code safety as well, Tom, but I don't think that's part of our scope here.
Oh, Chris, can?
Yeah.
Can somebody help me understand what part we want to create live work? Is it the entire ground floor? Is it part of the ground floor?
There's a great little diagram on Board Doc in the application, I think.
Yep, I could pull it up, I think. Or Chris, do you have it? Is it easier for you to pull it up?
Yeah, I can pull it up.
I've got it.
Which I was gonna ask about because the knee wall, does that imply that the whole kitchen and bathroom area is visible from the street?
It it is at this point, yes. Um so barring, uh you know, the outcome of this meeting and what I have to do as far as um, you know, separating the the space that someone may need when they come in, that's that's a work in progress. So this space is is pretty much wide open except for the back wall uh that's that's cordoned off by a door. Uh so, yes, so if you look in from the street side, it's wide open. Um so again, I'd have to figure out like who's gonna be there, what kind of space they need um to cordon off that area so that you don't look through the window and see into the kitchen area.
See, Mr. White, uh just you, you understand, um or or we understand, would you would uh be willing to accept the condition? I mean, that's gonna be probably a condition that you probably expected anyway, but that whatever your ultimate build out is, the understanding the board would be that residential um facilities are not visible from the street. That's the intent of this.
Correct.
Right, okay.
Uh I'm I was well aware of that, yes.
And and Chris, just, so this is a permit for half the ground floor?
Uh this, I'm trying to wrap my head around this, Bill Crunchout, as well, and I'm kind of stumbling through it. So I'm just trying to figure out what we need to to decide on.
So here.
Cause we're not, sorry, sorry, Tom, cause we're not, I don't think we're deciding on, you know, um site plan layout. You know, we're not discussing where Tom has a toilet or vanity or, you know, the 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 storage closet unit. That's not, I don't think that's part of the scope here. But Bill, Nemser, I I just, again, I need I need help trying to figure out. I don't want to dive into details that are not necessary and I want to focus on the things that are necessary.
Right, well, I this is not, this doesn't trigger site plan review. So you're not doing a site plan review.
Yeah.
You're strictly evaluating the proposal against the the special permit criteria and determining if it, you know, if the objectives of this project are you that you've considered them against the criteria. And in the end, that um any good outweighs the bad and meets the intent of the special permit uh for this uh particular use. So you're you're you what you're doing, you're not, you're right, Chris, you're not doing the, I don't want a marble in here or something. That's it. That's nothing to do with it. It's just saying, is a live work unit as allowed or zoning by laws by special permit, does it meet the criteria and is it appropriate for this location? That's it.
Um, can I can I speak, please?
Go ahead, Tom.
All right, so uh Bill and Chris, if if you um it to to answer your question is to like get your head wrapped around this, like the size that you're seeing right now on the screen, that's half of the ground floor. The other half is occupied by Thai Chili. And above there are. So this space that we're talking about is half of the da- of the downstairs of that building.
Yeah, Tom, I'm not trying to wrap my head around the the building context here. I'm trying to wrap my head around what I needed to help you make a decision to help you on. So what what do I need to decide? Like, what does this board need to decide? Um I'm trying not to weave down the road. I'm not trying not to go down the path that we don't need to go down.
Okay, I agree.
So it sounds like special permit is important, of course. So we could look at, so again, we'll just go back to the staff report. It says, does this meet the criteria of special permit in section ten point four? Does it meet the DOD special permit as described in nine point four point six? Does this decision of the approval wait, the decision? Do we, will we allow a live work dwelling unit here? So.
Can can we visit the definition of live work? And how much work there has to be?
Yeah. Um. Let's see, can you see, I'm gonna try, share my screen. It's in the staff report here, let's see. Um can you see, can you see mine?
Yes.
Okay, so um. Okay, so right here. Um, this is what it says specifically.
No, I'm I'm asking for the zoning definition of live work. And how much work needs to be there? Cause work is primary, right, in this? And living is secondary.
Uh, I don't, let me see. Let me look. I don't think that's the case. I think it was more a question of what was going on. Let's let's see. It's in um eleven.
Can you just bring it up on screen?
Yeah, yep, yep.
Here.
I got it.
Can you guys see this?
Oh, no, Bill's driving.
No, I'm driving.
Uh, you wish.
I'm going at high speed. Um, so section eleven, which is our definitions. Let's see.
I have it on page ninety seven.
Oh, you're good. Okay, beat me. You did beat me, Chris. Um. Oh, stop. Here we go, right here. Can everybody see that? And this is the one. Yeah, we did. It does say secondary or accessory. Yes, you're right. So it, um.
So I I'm just curious, you know, this is probably the first one we've ever had to do, but, you know, what's work? I mean, is that it's open to the public a lot of the time? I don't really know, or is it just me, you know, working on a computer and doing remote work?
We already have that in storefronts in Maynard.
But I mean, the intent is that the commercial activity helps downtown Maynard and by the way, the the operator of that commercial activity happens to sleep in the room out back, right? Isn't that the point?
Yeah, and 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 adding i- i- adding mass downtown of people. That's that's what it would be. Um I think they're they're, you know, in our definition, we have we have uh commercial, manufacturing, artistic. Um. But what what it, when it, when it says, you know, residential secondary to the place of work, yeah, I I think that's that's understood and and having the visibility factor from the street, you know, limited to the commercial aspect um would make sense there. Um so far as.
No, I'm just looking for some sort of condition or guarantee that work activity helpful to downtown happens. And then if that's good, then I'm I'm fine with somebody living out back, but just want to make sure there's activity in the workspace.
Well, that that is the the goal, obviously. That that definitely is the goal here. Um my, that was definitely my intent. That's why I left the space the way I left it um so that we could have that opportunity. Um but to have a a commercial, uh someone to rent it commercially for that whole space is just, it's not happening right now. So as a building owner, I need to, I need to come up with a plan and this seems to be the plan that because residents, we need residency uh in Maynard. Anytime one of my apartments uh go up for rent, it's it's immediately taken. I have forty five calls on the apartment. Um there's definite need and there's a need for people to consolidate uh working and living, I believe. So uh the space has been empty since October. Um and I'd like to fill it. And I'd like to, you know, have some commitment to downtown and to continue thriving.
I think if 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 um, you know, in this case where it's a special permit, you know, the board, it's the board's permit and I think Mr. Whiting understands that as well. This is something that if it wasn't what was intended, it could jeopardize the entire permit because the board always has that right, like with any special permit. But the idea and the um activation of the street and of the district by a a a business in combination with residents is something that could be really a benefit to our cultural district, I think, and I think that's why we put it in there. And I I think our our housing production plan um even discusses the use of these. So I I could see that um, you know, the board has the board has the teeth and the board uh still has a level of control because it is their permit.
I mean, I'm I'm all for this. It's just that for me to sign off on the first special permit criteria, I need assurance that work is primary and work will happen.
Yeah, so let's talk about that. Um, I mean, so if you're working in Maynard, businesses, if they follow good practice, they would file with the town that they have a business. What is that called when you, when you have, when you? Business license in town?
Yes. Yeah, it would, a business license would go through a regular uh zoning check here. So the type of business still, it it wouldn't change. If it's not allowed, it's not allowed. If it is allowed, it is allowed.
Yeah, so and and I imagine, Tom, that you you're probably envisioning a business or some type of work environment that would would go and through the proper channels and have a business license. Is that reasonable?
I do, yeah. I mean, and uh what you, we should include, you know, inspections and all that um stuff that goes along with the business. I mean, like I said, I've I owned my business for a number of years and, you know, I know the compliances of a town or a city, uh whether it's fire, you know, police safety, uh OSHA, uh all the compliances that you have to have when you run a certain business. Um I think what I envision uh for this would be um something that that someone does in a space that they can do at at home. Or they have a big space and they want to expand classes, uh I don't know, massage, um yoga, uh different artists, different displays. That that's what I'm envisioning. I don't know if that will come to fruition, but that's what I'm envisioning.
Yeah, um would, I'm just trying to figure out how to tie this to the question of what work is. So could we, could we tie it to? One example would be to have a, to maintain a business permit with the town of Maynard.
All right, well, if you run a business, I would assume you'd have to, yes.
Right? So that means that the establishment itself, the occup- whoever occupies this space would have to have an handed business permit to do so? Would that be fair to?
Well, Chris, that's not a hundred percent true. You don't always need a business permit, but I think my my point is, my point is sidewalk activity. I want whatever happens here to be open to the public and there will be public activity going through that door and walking the sidewalk. I don't want it to be, you know, just somebody selling stuff on eBay and it's never open. It's just a closed facade and has no activity.
Are you looking to tie it to some type of public shop or would, say, would a um some type of consulting business be reasonable for you, Bill? People walk in, they have some service provided, they walk out?
Yeah, I I think I'm looking for a condition that, you know, it's open to the public, you know, twenty hours a week or something, I don't know. And I'm I'm curious if there's a market for that, or is the market just, you know, a closed activity and they're just running something that has no public interface?
Well, it's a tough one. I I it's a good question because right right now, if if it was of, let's say, there's a business and it's a viable business, um there's instances where it could just go in and not accommodate, you know, walk in, re- regularly be conducive to walk in traffic. Uh I couldn't see that, but on I am the and that's a possibility right now, you know, uh uh if we're thinking of, I mean, I think the essence of what you're talking about is having a um some sort of activation of public life. Uh and and that's something that's uh, you know, I mean, I guess it's gonna be dependent also on what type of use you have, but I I don't know that that's something that we've really crafted for or in all fairness, prepared anybody for that. Uh I think your question about remaining open is key because we have had, we have had a number of uh businesses. Uh and Tom, I'm sure you can appreciate this. Um this is your remark about downtown. We've had businesses that really don't open at all and we've had, you know, we've had it where there's storage in there or things like this and it has to be a business. But Bill, I I this is a new one, maybe the thing to do is have a another check-in in a year or something and we we it's it's one of these, it's the first one we've done. Uh Mr. Whiting is, I've been, he's well aware of what the town envisions here. Uh I don't think that we could say necessarily, you know, you're, it's take or tear or soldier sail or it's gonna be open and a, you know, attraction or anything like that. You know, attraction or anything like that, but I think the idea that it has to be. Open and viable to earn its spot. As a live working it is is reasonable. And it is. May I may I may I couldn't? It here's here's what I'm thinking. We kind of, we kind of need to learn about this, you know, we need need to learn what works, what doesn't work. And I'm very willing to work with Tom. To to figure out what's appropriate here and to give Tom some leniency or some. Flexibility to help help us understand. How to provide better guidance on this. So I I I don't I don't know if we're going to get all the answers here. I don't know if we're going to get all the answers tonight. Um, Tom, are you are you trying? What's your urgency on this? Oh, it's, I I thank you, Chris. Um, yes, my urgency is is, I I it's pretty urgent. I have an open space, um, a rental and I need the income. I mean, it's been. Since October, I've not had any income in this property. Um. I, I, Bill, I'm with you. I I'd like um it to be a viable downtown spot where people walk in. Um, but the answer to that is I I don't I don't know. I mean, I'll be vetting as I always do. I've been renting property for. About thirty years. Um, so I mean, I'm, I I vet people very well, whether it's a business or it's an individual. Um, I I do know I've read all the bylaws and I do know what you guys are trying to achieve in downtown Maynard. And I'm all for it. I own a building. I have I have skin in this game. So I'm I'm with you on that. Um, I guess I have to see. What comes forward with, uh, you know, who who is interested? Right now I have good feedback from realtors. Um, I've read many articles. Boston is doing the same thing. I mean, they're converting uh commercial space into residential space because it's needed. Uh, we have a dead residential uh spot in my building. Uh, that I need to fill, and I think this is a this is a good way to combine both.
I I have to point out, the request is not to add residential use. The request is to modify a commercial use to allow a secondary residential use.
That's correct. I I understand that.
So we have to maintain the primary commercial use. And I have a really hard time on the very first special permit criteria. That trading. Ground floor retail space for. A dead workspace with somebody living out back is a good thing for downtown Maynard.
I I agree one hundred percent. I'm not, I'm not saying that that's going to happen, and I'm going to do. What I have to to rent to a person that's going to. Do exactly what you want. Um, again, it's going to take time, but I do need to rent this space. And I'm not going to rent it to anyone because that's just not what I do. So I have criteria. And I I agree with you, Bill. I I think that. You know, I have to be, you know, I'll I'll bet them in this manner. He he was, again, I'm just going to point out, to me, there's, this is. A little experimental in a way where we're all trying to experiment and figure out sort of the boundaries of. This type of environment, work, live environment. I want to learn from it. I'm willing to give Tom um a lot of slack and flexibility here if Tom is willing to share with us what he's learned in the future. And because that's what I want to do, Tom. I want to I want to learn more about this, but I agree, Bill's Bill Crenshaw's correct, like the I think I think the intent. Is clear to me that this is the the work, the the live is, the the work is primary, the live is secondary. And I don't know, Bill Crenshaw, I don't know what else to give Tom besides that as a criteria. And then to have, you know, a check in and say six months or whatever to see how things are going. Maybe Tom will have better information then, and maybe we can learn something from it. I don't know.
To me, I mean, and there would just be, we need a condition. It has to be an active, public, accessible. Work.
So hearing that, Tom, what do you what do you think about? The the idea of making conditions that are like it's the public accessible? That it the primary condition, the primary uses as as a commercial establishment? What does that sound to you? What are the challenges you see? Well, the challenges I see are people coming into a business at this point. Um. I'm not saying that they don't, and I'm not saying that I I I won't make that a criteria for who I rent to. Um, I can't guarantee how many hours they stay open. I just can't. It it just depends on the ebbs and flows of their business, whatever that may be. So I I can't speak to. Um, the hours that they can keep. I I just can't.
Chris, can I ask a couple of questions?
Yeah, Bob, good.
And so, Tom, I. What what is the length of the lease that you're anticipating? Is it a one-year lease? Is it a five-year lease or ten-year lease?
So typically, my residential's are one-year leases and my commercials are five-year lease with a twenty-year extension.
So what happens if somebody signs a lease for five years? And then they close their business at the end of the year?
It it happens, Bob. I mean, I've I've dealt with it. Thai Chili has been bought and sold three times since I've owned that building. So I've been through it uh with leases as far as leases go. Um, I have to be flexible as a as a building owner. Um, and I try to work with the the people that I rent to, uh, you know.
So if the so it's if you do the five-year deal and somebody closes their business at the end of two years, they get to stay there. For three years with the vacant storefront. That's that's what I'm hearing?
Oh, no, no, that's not what I'm saying. I'm saying if they're not, if they're not going to live, if if this particular spot. Isn't used the way it's supposed to be used, say their business closed, but they still want to live there. I can't allow that. It breaks the lease. And also, it one thing to remember too, um, this is a zoning issue. Uh, and if it wasn't consistent with the zoning, it would be, uh, the the. Um, unit would be in violation and it would be become a code enforcement issue.
Um, I I'd just like to point out that there are a lot of businesses. That don't get. Foot traffic. You know, they get very little foot traffic. It's like there was a fellow who was. Downtown who had a sound engineering business. We have very few people coming into his building. Most of his work was going out to see them. But he had a a storefront use. And he had the residential component, but that, you know, that was certainly permissible. Nobody questioned that. So, um. I I, you know, I just think it's a, it's a. It's a really tricky thing for us to try to figure out what boundaries around it. That are going to make sense to. You know, encourage, you know, commerce downtown, which is the goal. And uh. Not lose the commerce because, you know, somebody wants to live in this space. Just my comment.
Well, I mean, I I can tell you that. Based on how I'm reading what the special permit would be. Be a live work dwelling. So if I had a lease. With someone who had a business that was living in the back, that would be part of the lease stipulations. So if their business closed, I would not allow them to live in the property any longer. I hope that helps. They they'd follow, they'd be invited at that point, it'd be in violation. Correct. Yeah, because I mean, the code is clear. That it says, uh, uh, a work is the the primary. Um. I mean, I. You know, the the idea. That. You're going to be able to, you know, uh. Let me back up. I'm looking at classifieds on Massachusetts, you know, cultural council for, in this case, was the artist or whatever the case is. Um. I mean, there's a demand out there. Um. I think what 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 this board. What I've heard, what they're concerned about is that, you know, you come on there, what constitutes. Commercial activity that that is beneficial? And of course, any successful commercial activity, I mean, it was appreciated and would benefit the town, but um. It seems to me that a a check in. I mean, we just don't have enough information like Chris is offering you an opportunity here to. I I I don't want to say be an experiment, but to try a new concept and where we could learn from it. Um, but I also think that I and I know I would end up being the taking the brunt of this at first. I also think that if something happened and that there was no activity there. And it was absolutely, you know, absolutely not consistent. With the intent that that would be an issue. And and I think looking at the way mass. Cultural council's talking about what your expectations are. Uh, it seems to me with your your vetting process and you've got experience in this, you know, you you could you could tell who you're dealing with and what they're doing. The question, really, I mean, the question is, and I, this is for Bill, it's kind of a rhetorical question. Um, I guess, but. You know, if we had. A use that was, you know, nobody hangs out to see like certain types of businesses and there's yet they're viable, they're successful, or so if we had an office there, you know. Not everything's going to attract a crowd, and maybe it doesn't attract any crowd. But but if it's a viable, open business that is clearly a business. Does that meet the intent in intent? You know what I mean? That that's the question. I I I think it does, but maybe it maybe it doesn't, but to have it. Completely devoid of any sort of commercial activity is simply unacceptable on a code violation. And and I do agree with that, Bill. Um, I I want a successful business in there. Um, and I do, you know, I I do think that it can work. And I have no problem checking in and giving my feedback as to how it's working. Again, like I said, I've I've. Owned and run several different buildings and properties. And. You know, I I do know what I'm looking at, and I do know that. During my research of of this, I I do realize that downtown Maynard. Uh, you know, it needs help. It there's just no way around it. It definitely needs help. So. For me to have another aspect and, you know, on top of the commercial. To bring someone into that space and be a viable downtown. Uh, part of downtown as my other property uh next to it is Thai Chili. You know, I mean, they they've had ebbs and flows too. So not a lot of foot track traffic goes in there at times, and then all of a sudden they're busy. So you have, I mean, there there are those swings in business. That's just how it is. Yeah, right. I I mean, I I guess, I'm sorry, it's just. Okay, hold on. We're gonna, let's just go back to the board. I just, I want to talk among the board members here, guys. What what? Jim, Bob, Natalie, Bill, you and that, we've heard enough, you're. I don't want to say enough. We've heard a reasonable amount about this. What where do we stand? What do you what do you think?
Um, okay, so I get the impression that Mr. Whiting has. What we all want in his head. I have no doubt that he'll find a way to. Head towards that. What he'll be able to, what tenant he'll be able to find, none of us can know. The problem is, if we give him these verbal guideline, you know, we've talked, we've hashed it out. What kind of precedent are we setting, right? If we send him off and say, go for it without any guidelines? Um. I, Bob, I think I know who you're talking about. The guy who took over the storefront. And he sat in there in his office at a laptop. I never, I walked by that every single day. I never knew what the business was. There was no signage. There was nothing indicating to me. It was literally like looking into someone's home office. I had no idea what he did. And it drove me crazy. So that is the type of situation that I'm talking about, even if it's not, yes, ideally, we would all love a busy storefront with people coming, going, whatever. My issue is that it we need to know that it's a business, you know, so I don't know if it's a matter of. Mr. Whiting, you encouraging or requiring or whatever, you know, some sort of uh indication of what the business is, like you. If if you want it to be a business, it needs to be registered and it needs to. Have a sign. I don't know, whatever it is, something just to, uh, again, I don't want to be looking into someone's home office. I don't want to be looking in someone's living room with a computer in the corner. That's my only input, sorry.
Other other board members?
Otherwise.
Sorry, Natalie, you can go ahead. Yeah, sorry.
No, it's okay.
So can I go, Chris?
Yeah, go.
Um. So I I'm looking at the fact that this is something that's. It's was passed by the town. So the town, you know. So this is an okay thing to do. And so we're like, you know, worried about. All the potential. Now. The the potential negative effects, you know, of of losing a space, if you will, commercial space in the property. But. Having empty spaces downtown is really, you know, not a good thing for the community, and it's not. What you want people to see when they drive by. You know, you don't want to have at least something that looks lively. So I'm generally against having vacant properties. And, you know, I know, um. That. Uh, um. You know, this is something that the town wanted to do. I I heard, so I think, you know, I want to be able to accommodate it. Um, I'm not so sure, though, that. If you sign a five-year lease with somebody, then they could be go out of business a year or two years. That you're going to be able to get them out of there. Because I don't know that that overrides the tenant law, if you will, for residential structures. Um, so, you know, I think we we go into it and we. We see how it works. We talk to people and send them off and hopefully. Um, it's something that we can continue to do because we have good results from. And uh, put a little faith in people like Tom to, like, you know, do what's right. Whatever that is.
Jim.
Really hard with vague laws.
Jim, do you have any thoughts?
Well, yes, I do. Uh, first of all, I want to, I want to commend Mr. Whiting for the presentation he's put on this today and his uh. His innovation to do this. Uh, nothing is, it nothing is, uh, cast in stone. But I think that, uh, Mr. Whiting seems to be a responsible person. I think we should go ahead and and fly with this thing. I think it's a. An appropriate way to do things, and we can revisit this and put in agreement. We revisit it in a year and see just what's what. It may be that it's the beginning of something that. We will applaud and and encourage more in downtown. Tom Part.
Thanks, Jim.
Mr. Chairman, um, what is the square footage? I I didn't see of the space.
Yeah, so the total square footage is nine hundred and sixty-nine square feet.
And someone's going to live in there and run a business. So what if? So nine hundred and sixty-nine square feet, you could probably have one owner business probably doing tattooing and art studio. That people come in and go teaching them how to do clay pots or um artwork or painting. That I I like that idea.
Thank you. Um, the the proposed space, as far as the commercial ended, could be up to three hundred and thirty-seven square feet. Um. Roughly, depending on what the business is and how much space they need.
It has an entrance.
That's correct. It's got a street entrance. Um, it's got like a. An entrance from the street, and then it's got another door that you enter into the the property. Yep.
And how would, how would you advertise this as as far as? Say you want to advertise as a rental, you want to live and work, how would you put this in the paper or in online?
So that that would be up to my realtor um to figure that out, but. Um, in talking with him, um, as long as it's permitted properly. As the process I'm going through right now, we can tell it as a work, live. Situation, um, and I I. From initial, um, you know, feedback from him and his clients, it's 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 getting good results. Better than the the single commercial. That kind of space for commercial is, it's tough to rent.
Right. Do you have, is your AGA accessibility with that?
Yeah, that's right on the street. So you walk, you're in the park. Yeah, that's right on the street. So you walk, you're in the park, you're in the sidewalk and there's no step up, there's no lip. You go right in. So there is ADA accessibility.
Very well, thank you.
Yeah, excellent. I have some of the same concerns that. Um, others, other board members have shared about this. I just, I don't think we're gonna. I I think we'll have a better handle on this in a year or two, hopefully, so. It's not that I don't want these things to be in place to to have a better understanding on. How the all the pieces connect to each other. I want that. And I want better guidance. Honestly, I want better guidance from the town or the zone bylaws that helps even people like Tom navigate on things that. Can be appropriate. And things that may not be. And so I think there is work to do in town to help. Write clarity to this whole endeavor. Um, but I'm, in general, I think. I think this is a small risk from from a town standpoint to engage with with this type of applicant. So that that's kind of where I stand and Bill, I I carry your same concerns, I just, I don't know where. You know, I don't know if we're gonna. Get to the answers, um, you know, without learning. I think we just need, I I personally, I think we need to learn about it. And the way to learn is to engage with it. So that's kind of where I come from in terms of how to answer some of your questions.
Yeah, I mean, my only concern is, you know, learning is great, but a year from now, we can't. Change a five-year lease. So. You know, once, once we approve anything, anything can happen.
Yeah, I I agree. And if this was a large property, I mean, like, if this was a storefront with two thousand square feet. I think we would need a lot more, you know, I think there'd be a lot more bones to this that would be necessary. Maybe we we'd need to see a lease, maybe we would need to understand who the applicant was, maybe the commercial applicant. Or the renter itself would need to be here discussing as well, perhaps. I think this is a small enough space, and I agree with you, Bill, I just think it's a small enough space where it's it's just, there's a low risk element. So even if it does, even if that does occur, I I just don't think it's a big loss. I think the loss would be if we didn't engage with this topic and then learn from it. I think that would be a bigger loss in this particular case. So that's kind of where I sit. Um, I I know enough where I'm willing to support this applicant, but I don't want to. I don't want to sway others and jump the gun too early. Is there any, yeah, go ahead, Tom.
Thank you, Chris. Um, so in answer to Bill's question, um. As far as the leases go, um, with any tenant that I have, whether it's a business or it's or it's a residential tenant. If the lease doesn't work out, we just move on to the next person. Do you know what I'm saying? So there are, you know, the the lease is legally binding. So I have some um leverage as to how I conduct. My business with this person or group. So as far as that goes, if the lease didn't work out, I'm not pigeonholed to five years. If it doesn't work out, they move on, I move on. I find someone else and we do the same thing.
And wouldn't it be considered non-conformance if we just at the perm, if the planning board decides that. There that this particular case is not in conformance with the special permit criteria that we approved? Wouldn't it be a non-conformance and then the property is not allowed to be occupied at that point, Bill Nemzer? So then, is there a condition here that's reasonable that we could put forth? That's, you know, again, just emphasizes the the commercial element side of it, but not, I also don't want to be too restrictive. I don't want to say thirty hours a week and then we have to go monitor for thirty hours a week. It's not what I want. I want to have space to learn, but I just want. Maybe the condition is that the intent is that the commercial establishment remains open to the public, to the best of its ability or something. Chipballing here, so help me out, guys.
Uh, Chris, can I ask uh Mr. Whiting something, please?
Yeah.
Uh, Mr. Whiting, uh, what if uh an initial goal round here? You uh entered into only a one-year lease and that way there we could revisit this uh. In a in a year, just to check and see what's going on and then you haven't locked anything in uh more than just that one year.
Okay, so the problem with doing that and being that restrictive with a tenant is that if they choose. They may, they may choose not to rent from me if it's only a one-year lease, if it's a commercial. Um, situation. So I can't, I can't in good faith agree to that because I think it would. It it would definitely throw off a a good chunk of my uh base that I'm going after. I I hope you can understand that.
What if it was a a one year with a with a guaranteed option?
Um, I I guess I can, I can look into that.
I mean, if you if you rented it for a year and guaranteed an option to renew for four years. Uh, you're actually doing a five-year lease, but doing in two stages.
I suppose I could, like I said, I could look into doing something like that.
That would give us an, uh, uh, sorry, Bob, it was they, that would give us an an opportunity to revisit this in a year. Know what uh you've gone through, what the town has gone through and uh hopefully it'll be a win-win.
And Jim, I think it's a fine idea. I just, I don't know how. We, I'm not really comfortable having a condition that the applicant has a one-year lease. I don't want to have a condition on his lease. Criteria, though, that's.
I I'd be happy if he just said, yes, I'll try to do that. I mean.
Okay, yeah.
May I speak, Mr. Chair? Um, what what if um Tom? Has a condition or especially uh he leases out of the property. But the person that has to, that wants to open up space comes in front of the board and explains what he has to do. And then we can work around that.
I don't know the implications of that, but.
No, I don't like that one.
Tom, what do you think?
I I I wouldn't agree with that because, again, it would just, it would push away a lot of my potential renters.
The problem is, though, if you're, if you're gonna rent commercial space, nine hundred, nine hundred and whatever square feet. Just say to a tattoo artist or a painter, you also have um. You know, their supplies and their ink or their paint going down the drain or on the street. Or, you know, it's, some of it could be toxic to the environment. It's not. So I mean, I think they would have to come in front of the board anyhow.
Bill Nemzer, um, when a business moves into a current space, do they come to the board?
No, they come to us uh at OMS and they would be um. They would be checked for zoning. So, for example, like, uh, actually tattoos, you can't do there, but but.
Um, but but that would, so in this case. If if Tom has a commercial, if someone has, if he has a tenant that had that occupant, if Tom gets a tenant. He's gonna have, they'll have to go through that process even a anyway, Bill, right?
They're not gonna necessarily have to come in front of the planning board unless it was a special permit used.
Not the planning board, but they're gonna have, they have to, you were saying they have to go to the town.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, so if if a tenant came in, I would have to. Sipulate, okay, you're gonna have to go in front of the, or, you know, ask the town. To see if it's okay to do that type of business in this space. Most of the time, I do know that, you know, like you said, the the ink. And, uh, you know, the hazardous waste that's involved, I've dealt with it for thirty.
Can can that just be the condition then? Can we just say, look? The approval here is that the occupant goes through the the traditional process. Of establishing a business in town that Bill Nemzer just described. Isn't that enough? Isn't that enough guidelines? Isn't that what, isn't that enough?
Well, I would assume that most businesses do that already. Is that correct?
Well, a business that that comes. If if it's a buy-ride business, but meaning that that, you know, that there is no. Additional review are required. They're gonna come in and if they're gonna do any interior work or they're gonna go, you know, anything like that, they're gonna have to get a building permit. And they're gonna, they're gonna look and they're gonna say, okay, well, you can't have a um whatever, you know, restricted user. No, you can't, doesn't go there. If a business just opened and it was an. Abuse that was not permitted and they just decide, well, we're just gonna go in business, it'd be a code violation to be shut down by the building commission. Um, and and again, I would reiterate, um. You know, special permit is that that the board's. Uh, discretion. And it's on uh Mr. Whiting to to decide, you know, on on that end. I think he he seems to have a grasp of this whole thing. Um, but the answer is yes, uh. The the uses themselves would not change whether it's a live work. Um, as it's written right now. Um, and, you know, there's, like you said, one of the changes you might want to make, you know, based on this, maybe we said, okay, so these are the kind of uses. You want it specifically or whatever, but at this point, um. You know, they would be, they had to be consistent with our our zoning, the use.
So again, I'm willing to support this applicant with the intent of learning. And I think Tom gets a sense from, I'm pretty sure Tom gets a sense of. That what we're sort of trying to do here and Tom, thanks very much for your patience and all this. This is. A learning opportunity for us.
No problem at all. I I do agree that this is, uh, you know, it is a learning process. Um, you know, but I I think I can, uh, you know, I I can, I can pull it off.
We we just, we just try to get things right. That's what we try to do. So we're trying to be thoughtful as best we can and protect the town. So, um, I I I know I have enough for me. Does does anyone else need more information? Um, does does anyone wanna, so I'm I'm gonna go through, I'm gonna file motions to. Um, by the action plan that Bill Nemzer has in the staff report. This, does anyone? Does anyone want to craft a condition? I'll tell you what, I'll just file a motion and if there's a condition that that we feel needs to be crafted, please go ahead and add it. So the first motion will be. That we determine that the applicant meets the special criteria, listen, in the special permit. As described in section ten point four of the zone bylaws. And these are the ones that are, that that consider social, economic and community needs, traffic flow, agroatic, proceeds of utilities, neighborhood chara- characteristics. Impacts on the natural environment and potential for fiscal impact.
I'll second that.
Chris, can you clarify? This is only for unit forty-two, right? All this is just for unit forty-two.
Tom and Bill, please clarify that that's the case.
Uh, yes, Chris, that's the case, just unit forty.
So, yes, so the application is only for unit forty-two and the motion was only for unit forty-two. And we have a, we had a second from Jim. Is is this the time to have a condition at all? Maybe something that's kind of guidelines? Bill Nemzer? Yeah, so, I mean, the guideline here for Tom, I think the condition would be that that the intent of the board, that the planning board. Is so that a commercial establishment occupies and runs the space so that it's. Generally publicly accessible and publicly facing. I think that's the point here. It's not that it's some, you know, eBay selling service, but the intent is. That's publicly facing, so I I think the condition will say is, the condition will be that the business itself. Is, and the intention of the business itself is supposed to be publicly interactive and publicly facing. That's the intent and that's, I feel like there's enough flexibility in there for you to navigate sort of that, right?
There, there is, I believe, yes.
Okay, yeah, I'm not, I'm trying, I don't want to make things restrictive, but I want to provide guidance as well.
Uh, Chris, I'll second your modified uh motion.
The condition, Jim?
Yes.
Thanks. What do you guys think of that? Bill Crancha is thinking deeply about it.
The condition is guidance, right?
I know, I know, Bill, I know.
I'm good.
I know, um, but, uh. For all that I know, I feel like writing guidance is gonna be helpful here rather than. It's a special permit, like, we can just pull Tom in later and, you know, pull it from him if he's not doing, you know, Tom's gonna do a fine job. I know that. Tom's gonna do a fine job. And, you know, if if he has someone sleeping on the couch in the front room, he knows the permit gets pulled, that's all.
That's it? I don't know. I mean, if this was up up upper floor downtown and they were bitcoin mining, I couldn't care less, but. And it's ground floor.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, so that's, that's the motion. I'm gonna do a roll call. Jim?
Yes.
Natalie?
Yeah.
Bill Crancha?
No.
Bob Brown?
Yes.
And I'm, yes. Uh, second motion, that it's, it's. The motion is that we did, we agreed that the. Permit, the the applicant meets the criteria for the downtown overlay district special permit as described in section nine. Point four point six. And that this, this is the DOD special permit. Is. There's three components, four components. The first is, I'll be sharing my screen. First component is that the proposal constitutes a high-quality development. I don't think this applies. Cause this is not a property development, does it? Bill Nemzer?
No, it's a consideration and and and, um, in this case, it's a, it's a use, so it's not.
Yeah. When applicable, the proposed development will provide effective protection of the Aspet River. I'm not sure this applies either.
So, Bill, can you explain why DOD applies at all? I mean, this is, this is a underlying use allowable. It's not, and I like asking for a reduction in. Number, size of living units, are they? Maybe they are.
Um, I'm not, I I'm I don't think I understood that, Bill.
I'm having a hard time understanding why the DOD overlay applies in this case. What about the DOD overlay rules are they taking advantage of?
They're not really. It's a central business, in all honesty. It's it's a central business that that triggers this. Um, the the difference is that, as you guys remember, we. Wanted to have flexibility by to apply downtown overlay district criteria to any activity in the. In the uh district. In this case, you know, it it where it says like, you know, one of the following means. I would say, you know, uh, um. When we're looking at at how does this work with a criteria, I mean. You could take everything from, um. I would say really want a criteria one, two. I mean, really, it checks a lot of the boxes.
I think I'll say it a different way now that I'm looking at this. I think we could not approve this and approve. The third action and Tom could go on his way and be happy and have a renter and be fine. I don't think he, does he, does he need number two approved?
Yeah, we decided that we 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 did that last town meeting.
Okay, all right.
So the criteria applies.
Okay, so again, we'll just go, we'll go.
We did it, we did it thinking, uh, in that case, it was for like, remember, it was the marijuana businesses and stuff.
Okay, well, so A is the proposal constitutes a high-quality development. This doesn't apply. The proposed development will provide effective protection of the Aspet River. I think Tom has demonstrated that. I have heard no information that it doesn't do this. Most development will improve the functioning of the downtown by at least one of the following. All these. All the parking spaces. Parking spaces. Pedestrian experience, okay, I could sign on to number three pedestrians. There is, it provides improvement. I don't know about significant, but it provides an improvement of pedestrian experience. Number four is not applicable. It has to do with water quality.
Number four is not applicable. It has to do with water quality and stormwater. Increases the views and access to the Aspet River does not applicable. Provides it, number six is provides a significant improvement to the functioning of the downtown area. I could get on board with, not the word significant, but that, number three and six, there are improvements. And finally, D, the proposed development is designed in a manner that is compatible with the existing natural features of the site. This is not applicable either. So I'm fine with saying yes, Bill, because there's nothing to me that says that there's no nos here, but there's very few yeses as well. Does that make sense? Bill, Bill Nimsor doesn't like this.
And, you know, I do, I agree. I think, I think that it, it's consistent with the whole thing. We're, we're looking at the scale of it as one unit. If it was fifty units, it probably would have significant a, effect on the pedestrian circulation and improves the experience downtown. One unit is one unit. So I think it's a question.
I'll make a motion to that this application meets the criteria for the down, downtown overlay district special permit as described in section nine point four point six of the zoning law.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Everyone's all discussing.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
Would this be the appropriate time to, um, move to add a condition for an annual check-in for two years so we can learn how it's going?
Maybe for number three, I was thinking.
Number three.
Which is the, that this is a, this, this will allow to be a live-work environment. I think, I think. What do you think? All right, I'll take roll call. Jim?
Yes.
Bob Brown?
Yes.
Natalie?
Yeah.
Bill Crenshaw?
Yes, and I'll sneak in the comment that to make this legit public hearing, we probably need to ask for public comments.
Yeah, I should have done that. Tell you what, we'll finish the vote and then we'll take public comments.
But, but it was a yes to start that.
Okay, I also, I'm also a yes. So it's five zero for the second one, Bill. My apologies to members of the public that are still on. I see there is Kate Wheeler and Molly Bergen that, that I believe are members of the public. Public comment is now open. Any public comments can be made.
Uh, can I just jump in?
Sure, go ahead, Kate.
Kate Wheeler here. Oh, with several of the marijuana establishments granted much more additional traffic expected. There was the gift of the planting of several of our missing uh, street trees and we are still missing trees. They wouldn't be immediately adjacent to the project, but they'd be, yeah, other, other locations in the downtown. If that were the planning board's choice of, you know. So just to vote for that.
Is the, is, is the implication of your question to see if, if an applicant such as this in general could contribute to the tree planting plan?
E- exactly, yeah, thanks.
All right, something for the board to consider.
Um, if I could just, I just wanted, I joined in because I just was here to listen in to support Tom.
Can you, can you just, for the record, please identify yourself?
Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, my name's Molly Bergen.
Thank you.
And, um, I'm an insurance agent in downtown Maine. I've been here for, I think, twenty-six years. I've known Tom and I know Tom will do a good job and he'll maintain his building and it will be, um, beneficial for the downtown area. That's all.
Thanks, Molly. We appreciate it. Okay, thanks, Bill, for the reminder. It's been a long night. Um, all right, number three. I'll make a motion to approve a special permit that will allow a live-work dwelling unit at, and Tom, help me out here. Would this be forty-two Main Street?
Uh, yes, it would be forty-two Main Street.
Okay, Bill Nimsor, that's, you got, that, that makes sense to you too? Okay, so it's the, it's to approve the special permit to allow a live-work dwelling at forty-two Main Street. That's the motion. Wait a second.
Second.
Uh, this would be the time to, I think, add conditions, Bob. You can, you can make a motion to add a condition.
Thank you. Um, I would, I move we have, I'm sorry, I got some feedback. Um, I move that maybe if I move my phones aside, that will start happening. Um, I move that we add a condition to require an annual check-in for the first two years at a meeting before the planning board where the applicant can inform the board as to his experience in, in, in renting the unit and the types of businesses that have occupied the unit.
I'll second that motion.
I'll just take a roll call. Unless there's any further motions to be made. Or conditions?
Mr. Chair, may, may I say, say, say something? Wouldn't you want to put the square footage of that property as a, as the business live? Only because, uh, for instance, you know, Boston, they're, they've got this live-work art space and they've expanded it out into the middle of the street. So what happens then? The square footage expands and you don't have a permit for that or, or it has to go back in front of the board? Is that how that would work?
It's a good point, man. That is a good question. Bill Nimsor, any advice?
It goes back, oh, um, it goes back to consistency with the approval. Um, if I, I don't.
So Tom stated that, that, that the commercial space was three hundred and ninety-something square.
Right.
Right? So in, in, in that, are you, I think that's saying that the the motion and the approval should reference that space in that? Is that what you're suggesting?
Of course, that would be.
So you could say, yeah, you could say no, no, no less than X amount of square feet shall be dedicated to.
Well, because as a business, as the business would probably grow, you know, some people have, I've seen some people, you know, build extensions off their place. And they're saying, oh, that, that's my address has that. My address has, I can do this here.
So would this be a minimal, like a minimum number?
Yeah, I would think, I think it'd be the minimum number. Yeah, because I mean, that property can't really be expanded. If they go into the public right away, that goes to select boards, so that's not us.
Well, no, but they could go next door. I mean theoretically, I mean.
Yeah, but we're only doing forty-two. We're doing.
Apartment upstairs.
That's a different number. So this is for the first floor, forty-two. We could say that is, that it maintains a minimum square feet of three hundred and fifty. We could say that.
Well, I don't, I don't have a minimum of three fifty. The, the space that we're talking about is three. We could do a max, I think what, and that, and I, I'm only speaking, and correct me if I'm wrong, that you don't want it to be any bigger than what it is, correct?
If it's a live-work, you, you need space to live and you need a space to work. How do you, how do you, how would you expect me to live, to, to work in my, to sleep in my beauty salon? That'd be unsanitary. Or you have to, you have to separate those two if it's a live-work space.
That's correct. I, I did address that in the beginning, um, saying like, depending on what type of business is there, but there would be a divider between the two.
Yeah, I, I think for this particular one, I'm, I'm not gonna make a motion to include a square footage requirement. Um, so another board member can, but I'm, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not gonna do that myself. But I hear your point and that, and I think it's something we definitely need to.
No, it's just something to consider. I'm not, I'm not asking to, you know, for you to make a decision right away, but something about for future, for the future.
Yeah, you're, you're absolutely right now. Thank you.
Well, you could, one thing that may, may, uh, we talked about earlier, uh, it's a condition that, that, um, nothing visible from the street shall indicate that this is a residential unit or something to that effect. You know, from the window is, because that, I think that's the intent.
Sticky.
Well, like you said, yeah, if you have the, the annual check-ins, something like that.
I'm, I'm not adding another, another motion for a condition, but another board member is, all board members are allowed to add conditions as motions. Okay, I'll take a roll call on this. Jim Coleman?
Yes.
Bob Brown?
Yes.
Natalie Robert?
Yeah.
Bill Crenshaw?
You gotta remind me what we're voting on. We're voting on the condition to look at it every year for a couple of years.
This, so this is a, the motion is to approve a special permit that will allow a live-work dwelling unit at forty-two Main Street with a condition of, of returning to the board at a, uh, at a regularly scheduled meeting, one year and two year after the approval.
All right, very good. Yes, thank you.
Sure. I'm also a yes, so I believe that's five zero. And that's it. Okay, so I believe that closes, Bill, do I have to close the hear, hearing for that? Jim, can you do me the honor?
Yes, I would like to move to close the hearing.
Thanks, Jim. I'll second it. All in favor by voice, just say yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes. All right, that closes the hearing. Thanks, Tom. I hope you have what you need. Please reach out if you need any further assistance or guidance. Also, please reach out to the Economic Development Committee. Um, I'm sure they would love to support you on this effort.
I thank you all for your time. I know it's very late, but thank you.
Thanks, Tom. I'm gonna, I'm ready to close the meeting, guys.
Yeah, uh, I would like to move to close the, uh, the meeting.
We're uncomfortable with minutes?
We're not doing that now. I'll second that.
All right.
Okay, all in favor by roll call. Jim?
Yes.
Natalie?
Yeah.
Bob?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Thank you all for the longest meeting we've had in a long time.
Yes, thanks, everybody. A good.
Good night.